This is the regular. Okay, that was surprising. Heads up, this meeting is being recorded. This is the regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners' agenda for Monday, May 24th, 2021. We are, as we now know, being recorded. We're also live on Zoom and streamed on YouTube. Let's start, everyone, with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The states of America.
To the republic. One nation, under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice.
With liberty. Justice for all.
Ah, okay, so before we get to public participation, we have two items. The first is Commissioner Agnew. We are going to ceremonially administer your oath, which I see was previously signed.
Yes.
So if you have an appropriate document on which to swear.
I do.
Excellent. Normally, I would hold it for you, but my arms are not that long. Few tries. Repeat after me. I, Catherine H. Agnew.
I, Catherine H. Agnew.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Home Rule Charter of Radnor Township.
And the Home Rule Charter of Radnor Township.
And I will discharge the duties of Commissioner of Radnor Township with fidelity.
And I would discharge the duties of Commissioner of Radnor Township with fidelity.
Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm very, very pleased to be here. Thank you very much. It's quite an honor.
Next up is Mike Simmons, who has been in Radnor Public Works for many years and has been the head of Radnor Public Works for the last year. The good news is that there hasn't been any hiccups. Things have not gotten markedly better because we have had a phenomenal Public Works for years. I know that that's in large part because of the contributions that he has made before he was the head. And the fact that he was able to continue the high standards of service has been phenomenal. I can tell you that there is nobody who is happy that he is leaving. It is a source of consternation, which is how you want to leave the job, frankly. So thank you very much, Mike, and I'm confident that Bill has far more detailed things to say than I do, as do I'm sure a few of the other commissioners. But thank you very much for me and everybody in the first word.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jack. I can't say it as nicely as you just did, but I would like to provide some details, which hopefully will provide a little context on just how long and how much Mike has served Radnor Township. Hired on May 8th, 1989, as a highway laborer in the Public Works Department. So as that sinks in, Mike gave us 32-plus years of service to Radnor Township and our residents. He moved up, hired as a highway laborer, moved to a skilled laborer in 1990, to a driver in 92, light equipment operator in 97, up to a field leader in 2008, supervisor in 2018, and then, Jack, as you had pointed out, stepped up to fill the vacated role as director in August of 2020, and has been in that position for 10 months. During that time, you know, I've only known Mike for the last 10 years, but had an opportunity to go through his file a little bit, just to see some of the history, and there's a few letters in there of accommodation for works that Mike did through the years, a couple township manager notes of appreciation and thank yous. Also, most notably, Mike served as the representative for the Rate Union. Rate stands for Rep. Radnor Association of Township Employees, so the unionized staff here in the township. Mike served those folks, advocated for them, negotiated labor contracts on behalf of them. And I could say that when I first started back in 2010, we were coming out of a tricky economic time for the township. There was a lot of financial distress. And one of the first times I met Mike was in a negotiation meeting with Rate. And it, our relationship got off to a pretty rocky start, I'll say. But we were able to rebuild that through time and trust, and Mike actually deserves a great deal of credit for some of the new benefits that were established effective with the 2013 labor agreement that we had with the Rate folks that really did help stabilize township expenses for the long term and, you know, ensure that we were able to continue to offer those services with our guys. So Mike deserves a great deal of credit on that front. I can say also that Mike genuinely cares for the staff and the guys and gals that he works with. I think that came through in all of our different discussions and budget presentations through the years. Mike always advocated for the Public Works Department whenever and wherever possible. But at the same time, Mike, you know, like his predecessors ahead of him, had a problem-solving approach to things, wanted to serve the residents, wanted to solve problems, wanted to fix things, and prioritized accordingly. Whenever the work orders come in, Mike quickly moved his guys around to make sure things got done. And then just real quickly, let's think about what that meant for the last 10 months. As we dealt with hurricanes, we dealt with torrential downpours on Christmas Eve, followed by nonstop snowstorms through January and February of 2021, and then sprinkle in a pandemic on top of that where, you know, at any point in time, we could be missing, you know, half a dozen to a dozen of our staff, either, well, almost always quarantining because of close contact. And as, Jack, as you pointed out, and as a compliment to Mike and the entire Public Works team, they didn't miss a beat. Everything got done. The snow got removed. Luckily, it stopped raining and may never start again, but hopefully, when it does, it's in moderation. But I think that's all a high compliment to Mike. And as, Jack, as you pointed out, none of us are happy to see you go, Mike, but at the same time, we're also very happy for you. Anyone who puts 32-plus years of service in deserves a healthy retirement, and that's what we wish for you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And on behalf of myself and the rest of the township staff, thank you.
Thank you, boss. Thank you so much. Um, from my perspective, there's been three loves in my life: my family, God, and Radnor Township. From the bottom of my heart, I'm going to thank everyone. Thank you. That's all I'll say. Thank you very. Thank you, guys. Good night. I gotta go. I'm sorry.
That is great.
I don't know if Mike mentioned it. He got a great promotion. He's just going to be grandpa from now on.
That's the best.
That's his job going forward.
Thank you, everyone.
I love that. Mike, we're so grateful to you, and I wish you all the best in retirement. It sounds like you've got the best plans to spend time with family, and I wish you great happiness.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Neat.
And I'll just echo that, Mike. When I first came on board as a commissioner, you were always one of the many guys in Public Works with a smile on your face and what's very welcoming to me. And I appreciate that, and I'm grateful. And, you know, I know I say it all the time, but hands down, the Public Works team here in the township, they are like family, I think, to everybody here, all of the residents, and you are, you are part of the reason why it is such a close feeling that everyone has with our Public Works. And you guys, everybody loves you, and we will miss you. But have a great time. Enjoy being grandpa.
Thank you, guys, for everything. I appreciate it. You guys take care. Be well. Bye.
So with that, I can move us on to the meeting proper. We're going to start with item one, public participation. Anybody who's got public participation or public comment, you can raise your hand in the Zoom feature. Seeing none, I can move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items from the consent agenda that a commissioner would like to pull?
Yes, items E, F, and G.
Any other items? Hearing none, we'll start with item E. Item E, Resolution Number 2021-61, award of the contract for line striping of township roads to DE Gemel, Inc., in the amount of $14,298.49. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Steve Narsini, tell us about this.
Yes, sir. So this is an annual contract, commissioners, the one for striping or what we used to call the long line contract. So this is any double yellow lines on township streets, not state streets, on township streets, as well as the white lines you may see at intersections separating lanes. So it's an annual contract that we do for, basically for safety, so everybody can see the lines. So prices were obtained, and this is what we're bringing forth to the board for approval, hopefully, if it so pleases this board.
Mr. Comment.
Yes, Steve, my couple questions. On the line striping, are they using glass beads or any reflective in the paint, or is it just paint?
Yes, there are. There's a certain, so this is all done to pen dot standards. So there's a certain amount of glass beads in there. It's actually mixed in before, as it's being sprayed. So when you see our intersections that our guys do, where they may throw it by hand, it may be heavier or lighter, this is, should be a more consistent look. But it'll look like it does every other year it gets done.
Is... So the issue, what, so is there a list here in the packet? I didn't see a list of the streets. Is there a list of streets out here?
No, there is not. We can get that to you, Commissioner. So this contract is for, you know, they will do it sometime this year. So it's not a super rush, but we can get you the list. But again, it's only on township streets except for intersections that we control on a state street. So we are responsible for those stop bars and things like that that you see on a state road intersection because we own, operate, and maintain the intersection.
All right, but it's only for the double yellow and the stop bars, the white stop bars. It's not for any fog lines?
No, I'm sorry if I misled you. It is for any existing shoulder or fog lines, any lines separating lanes along that. If you look at the contractor, there's only about 700 linear feet of the white lines.
Okay, I see that. I see that right now.
Yeah, so if there is a fog line on a township road, which I'm not sure we have much of, but mainly, it's going to be for those lane separators approaching an intersection, the white lines.
We talked about doing that for Pine Tree, the fog lines. I don't think.
That was a conversation back in the day. Yes, sir.
I don't think they have. I would, I would think, I would like to see them there. My issue with the lines, especially the yellow lines, they're painting them from the truck. Is there somebody that goes behind them that can put down cones? What happens is while they're still wet, these get run over.
That does occur. So they do put cones down behind them during the process. Even with that, some folks do make a left-hand turn over the yellow lines. But it seems to have been, that event, that occurrence has been lessened over the years.
What there will be, will be one of the workmen that follows behind and puts the cones down, right?
That is correct.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Any staff comment?
Yeah, just, just real quick, Jack, I want to give a quick thank you to Matt Pallotti. He's one of our new supervisors over in the Public Works Department. This is the first time he's gone through with pricing this particular contract. And through his efforts, based on different quotes, he was able to obtain the particular price that we're paying here is about six grand less than the next closest. So, you know, that, that's his efforts, making sure we go through and, you know, call the, call enough vendors till we get a price that's best for the township. So I just want to say thank you to Matt for following through on that and getting it done.
Great. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving to item F, Resolution Number 2021-59, authorizing Kramer and Associates to perform HVAC work at the Radnor Memorial Library in the amount of $7,962. I will so move. Is there a second? Mr. Narsini.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this work is for, actually for warranty work at the library. And there are several, there are many components that have to be replaced. Those components themselves are covered under warranty, but like with many warranties, the labor is not. So Kramer is the current maintenance contractor for the library, and they provided this price. I have contacted them and gone through the price. So they will provide labor, small parts, pickup and delivery of the material, cleanup, and all that good stuff to install the several components that have failed and need replacement. So again, the components are covered under warranty, but the labor, delivery, cleanup, as well as, you know, small items needed for the installation are not. So we're asking that this be done as soon as possible as the weather warms up for the library.
Great. Is there any commissioner comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about this, Steve, because we, we finished the library, I guess, a year and a half ago, three and a half million, and then they put, it was a $7 million project, and I thought we had brand-new air conditioning. So I'm surprised to see this, this issue, that there's anything that's not covered. I agree with you. It's getting hot. We need to put, we need to make sure it's fixed. But why, what wasn't covered and why wasn't it covered?
So all the parts, all the components are covered, Commissioner. What is not covered is labor and small amounts of materials. So the warrant, the company that provides the warranty, the manufacturer, will ship the part, but they do not install it. It is incumbent on the owner to do so, which is standard in many warranties. So while all the major components that are being replaced, or components, I won't say major, components that are being replaced are covered, that does not include the labor to install them, to remove the old one and install the new one and dispose of everything. This also includes the recovery of refrigerant, the installation of refrigerant. None of that is covered in the warranty.
So, so why, why do they need to put in all new refrigerant? Did it leak? What broke?
Well, no, on some of these parts, Commissioner, when they, prior to removing that component, they have to evacuate the refrigerant, and then they'll install the new component and then.
That's my question. What, what broke? Was it evaporator coils, a condenser?
There are some condensers or some evaporators and some other items, and I apologize, I did not put the list in here. But it's somewhat, there was about five main components that need replacement. And then that's where the recovery comes in. But that's a small part of it. It's the hours of labor to do all the work.
Steve, we should, this should not, this should be totally covered. And the manufacturer, whoever, whatever units those are, they should cover, either they send their guys out to repair it. If we have to pay, then we submit a bill to them for our guys replacing their components. I can't believe that we have, we have some kind of major, one of the coils is going on the brand-new unit. It's only two years.
I understand, Commissioner, but that's the way this, their warranty works on this.
Well. This is, this is, this is not, this is not how it should be. We shouldn't take a look at that again. I would ask that you look at that again. I don't, that doesn't sound right to me. All right, thank you.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
I have a question. Did, so we did not buy the, those materials from Kramer?
No, they were installed under the construction contract.
And they were installed by Kramer? Is that, or is it just a different company?
Yeah, Kramer is the HVAC maintenance company for the library.
I don't disagree with, I don't disagree with Rich. So warranty and breed of contractor, two separate things. And so I don't disagree with him. I understand that we have to pay Kramer, but I do think that we should seek the money back from the manufacturer. If, you know, how much we're going to fight about it or not, but they seem to, they sold us faulty goods, and that's a different story.
Yep, absolutely.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
Yeah, just one more. Remember that the library building is, is the township's building, the Radnor Library Board, separate 501(c)(3) operated, but it's our building, so this is something that we need to take care of. So again, I'd ask that we take a look at this, and if nothing else, submit the bill to the manufacturer and say, this is what we paid, reimburse us, and let them say no, and then we can take it from there. But by all means, submit the bill, see what they say.
And we'll, we'll circle back with John Rice on that.
Great. Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item G, Resolution 2021-56, emergency repairs to the Ivan Avenue culvert in the amount of $74,700, funded by the Stormwater Fund pending an insurance claim. Mr. Narsini.
Thank you, Commissioner. So if anybody's driven by, they'll note that there's a seven orange barrels with lighted lights on top to keep motorists away. So the, the culvert was struck by a motorist, the wall, on May 13th. The culvert proper was not damaged, but the wall, that stone masonry wall, was moved back about three or four inches off. It has severe cracks in it. It's compromised. Add that to the fact that this compromised wall is adjacent to a high-pressure gas main, which is above ground and runs adjacent to the bridge, is why we're in an emergency situation as opposed to going to bid. So the culvert was examined, the culvert is fine, but the wall itself needs to be rebuilt. It will be ripped, removed down below its lowest crack, longitudinal crack, and rebuilt. There is an item in there for the possibility of lead paint remediation. If it, if we encounter it, we will do the test. If we encounter it, we will address it. If there is no lead paint, then we don't spend that money. Now, while I was inspecting the culvert, the upstream head wall also has damage, not related to this accident, but is in need of immediate repair. So the breakdown is pretty much $66,415 for where the motorist hit, $8,285 for the other portion of the wall. A good portion of this is to main train traffic throughout the project. So you'll see a Flagler Force or some similar company. The contractor will take one lane of the bridge while they're working, and Flagler Force will keep cars moving through, which is important with the, to say the least, with our police that work out of this building, as well as all the township staff, the apartment building, and the heavy usage of Anki Park. So the reason it says in the resolution pending an insurance claim, so we filed the claim, Mr. Tate has filed that claim with the insurance company. We are working with them. I know the cost of the repair, the emergency repair. We don't know the full outcome of the claim at this point. And the contractor has told me they would be able to be here within around four weeks. And in speaking with our structural person, that's fine. We keep the barrels up to keep folks away from that wall. So I am respectfully requesting the board authorize this emergency work in the amount of $74,700. The requirements for emergency work were followed. I did meet with the manager and the finance director on this. And now we are here with the board to get final approval.
Great. Any commissioner comments?
Do you have a question?
I hadn't heard about this, so I wanted to get, hear about it. What caused the failure, Steve?
So a motorist hit the wall. It's not the first time. I will tell the board, and I had mentioned this to the manager, we are going to take a look at the installation of guide rail, if it qualifies, and what the extent of that would be, but we will look at that. Only problem being, we do have an emergency exit from the township parking lot, which may preclude us from having guide rail there, but we will investigate that.
So was it one, one, one time that was hit, or was it multiple times?
For this incident, Commissioner Booker, it was one time. The car did not hit it head-on. It hit it from the side, which is what caused it to be pushed off, pushed away from the street, and which caused all those longitudinal and vertical cracks within it.
And how's the insurance claim going to progress?
So we're, we're working with them now. As a matter of fact, Melissa Khan contacted me for pictures and more information to give to the insurance adjuster. So I don't know the outcome of that at this point.
Steve, you mentioned that there's a high pressure.
Yes.
Right? Should that be moved?
So the last time this was hit, Commissioner Agnew, I did request that Pico bury that line. That request was denied, and it was denied this time also. So I.
They say why?
They didn't really get into it. It was more, you know, this is where it is. It's above ground. They're not worried about it. You know, I shouldn't say they're not worried about it. They're fine with its location. I did put our contractor in, I met with Pico on site for them to review it. And I gave our contractor the Pico contact information for protection of the line when they're doing their work. But Pico, and I, I don't mean to minimalize, of course, they worry about it. It's their six-inch high-pressure gas line. But they are okay with where it's located as opposed to burying it.
How close did the person come to hitting it, or the wall, wall being pushed into it?
Uh, I'd say probably about six inches. Eight inches.
No.
Steve, how many, how many times has this happened? So you were saying two, did you say two, I think, this time, and there was one time before, or has it been?
I believe, I believe the, those walls have been hit four times in my tenure here, which is coming up quickly on 10 years. Two times on this side and two times on the other.
That seems a little close for comfort, six inches.
Can we revisit that? You know, I mean, I understand, we have to get this work done and all that. I get that, but it doesn't seem to me that something that we should really let go.
No, I, I can say, I mean, it is not uncommon to see this. This is, I mean, there are gas lines that run, that basically follow a bridge. I've seen it many times. I've constructed bridges that have it. So this is a, an issue that Pico did not see the need to bury it. There are, I mean, there are site constraints there in that there's a stream there, so it could be buried. It would not be, it would definitely be more of a process to do so. But again, they did not see the need to do so. And I don't mean to say that Pico was being flip about it. They were not. They were just saying, you know, we are okay with where it sits.
May, I was, may I ask about the guide rail, Steve? Is that the silver, the, the silver? I was, may I ask about the guide rail, Steve? Is that the silver, the the silver like rails that they put up, like they just put up over on at the Scott Carlo Bridge?
So if if so, this would obviously I would discuss this with the manager and it would come to the board. We, I would recommend we don't use the silver. We would use, I would recommend weathering steel, which is the steel that rusts brown and stays that color. It's less obtrusive. But again, just anecdotally, I could tell you the guide rail is an issue with the proximity of the wall to the township building entrance to the emergency exit. So it it may be truncated and lose its effectiveness, but we'll do the evaluation and see where it goes from there.
Yeah, I was just thinking of the kind of the historic look of that bridge and over here I've gotten many questions and thumbs down on the silver guide rail that Penn Dot put up over by the Sawmill Bridge in front of our nice split rail fence.
So the the township, I I never spec just galvanized steel. It's always the weathering steel or in some cases we can use timber. It all depends on the application. I've done that in past lives.
Thank you.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment?
Yeah, just just two real quick bullet points. First of all, we'll know the status of the insurance claim before we start moving forward on the heavy expenses. If the insurance claim doesn't go the way that we think it should, and we've got the police report and all the documentation necessary, but if it doesn't, we'll revisit it and come back to the board before we do anything significant, which leads to the second bullet point. And one of the things that Steve and I talked about, which is similar to the concerns raised about the narrowness of the the culvert in the road there. If there's an appetite from the board to consider widening that, I'll I'll draw similarities to the Penn Dot job over on pay Darby Paoli that just finished up, although it won't be nearly that scope. Because this is a much smaller culvert, but the idea being that the road is widened, which should reduce bridge strikes going forward. At least hopefully reduce bridge strikes going forward. I can't guarantee that. But if if that's okay with the board, that's something we could we could start looking into. And then lastly, just and it's it's small consolation, but the wall's been struck four times in the last seven or eight years. Into its credit, it's done its job every time. It has protected the gas line. It it has kept the car on the road. It's gotten cracked and needed to be repaired, but it it did work.
Great.
Steve.
Sorry.
I do have one, Bill, Mr. White. When the the person hit the wall and they gave their insurance, we had their right the limits of their life, well, of their coverage, right? So do they have hundred thousand dollar coverage?
Yeah, I off the top of my head, I I don't know the extent of the coverage. That's that's all obtained in the police report, so we'll we'll know shortly.
Okay.
Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item.
Do we have to do the rest of the consent?
Oh, thank you. Yes. So just to explain, I have a large monitor and I'm trying to put the camera in the middle, which means I can't see the central bar. So when I'm switching from the screen to the Adobe Acrobat, it's hidden by my camera. So I'm kind of dodging around to see if I can find the icon that I need to click on. That's why I'm doing a little dance. I will move for items to A, B, C, and D. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 3A, Appointment to Memorial Library of Radnor Township, Gita Capadia Pauschakar for a three year term. I will so move. Is there a second? Is there any Commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item 3B, To Paul Road Waiver of the Stormwater Management Ordinance. I will so move. Is there a second? Okay, I see Mr. Hamlin and I thought I saw Mr. Marino earlier. Yep, there we are. And there's Mr. Nagorny. Whoever wants to give us some background on this, we have seen you once in the past, but if you give us just a reminder, let us know whatever has changed. And then we can talk about it.
Sure, I'll start and then I'll introduce Jeff and Pat. So we were before you on April 2nd, you may recall this is a pool and pool house project on the property. The engineers have the details, but it's approximately two and a half acres. We're adding 4,400 square feet of impervious. The the issue is that the land doesn't infiltrate. And so we came before you the first time with some mitigation procedures. You you all had some concerns that I afterwards had a chance to study. I will tell you, I came away with a greater appreciation for what you're trying to do. I I share your concerns. I think the last time we didn't quite quantify the extra accommodations we were making, but since then we've gone, we've gone back to the drawing board. Mr. Nocini has been very helpful. And we have picked up an additional approximately 2,500 square feet of existing impervious, so about 57% more stormwater management than we would otherwise be required to under the ordinance. So with that said, I'd like to turn it over to to Jeff, who's got the the presentation and the details.
Good evening. Jeff Nagorny with Mommy Engineers. I'm here with Patrick Hanlon, who's our project engineer working on the project is Mr. Marino indicated the the issue before us tonight is before you this evening is a waiver request for stormwater management on Mr. Marino's property. We did infiltration testing at several different locations on the property, all of which yielded zero, no infiltration. Stormwater's changed a lot since the 1970s. And those of us that have been doing it for quite a while understand. But basically, the BMP manual passed in Pennsylvania, etc. There's been a lot of action since then. And one of the requirements is that we infiltrate a portion of the stormwater, which helps to recharge groundwater, because if you look at a big shopping center parking lot, when that gets rained on, that water all gets collected and runs into a pipe and then into it does not sink in the ground. So infiltration is important. However, there are areas, properties where water will not infiltrate because it's either a very, you know, high clay silt content, whatever. And so we did take, we did take some advice. We consulted with Mr. Nortzini following the initial appearance that we had and actually went back and and as Mr. Marino, I think indicated, and also in the introduction that we have actually picked up a significant additional amount of impervious area, square footage, approximately 2,500, I think it is. That does that is not required to be managed for this project, but because we can't infiltrate the stormwater, Mr. Marino agreed that we would then oversize the system, the underground system, which is not infiltration. It's actually detention. It detains the ground, what the rainwater as it gets in there. Basically, I like to use the analogy of a bathtub. So what you do is you build a bathtub and then it has a small hole. So when it rains real hard, it fills up, but it only lets it out at a very measured pace. And that's what we've done to actually decrease the rate of discharge off this property with this system. So post-construction, there would actually be a much lower rate of runoff. I think it's on the order of point one six, 0.16 cubic feet per second. And I would like to let Pat Hanlon, our project engineer, just share a little bit about what we did in terms of picking up the areas and how we're going to get them into the bed. Pat, would you like to go ahead and take that? You gotta mute. You gotta unmute. We always forget.
I am now sharing a screen of why I want to present. These shaded areas are what we were collecting before. Now, what we're required to collect. I want to show you this picture here. This headwall is this headwall here. If you notice here, there is a existing discharge pipe for these two inlets right here. Our client, Bill Marino, confirmed with us that this inlet drains to this inlet in the driveway, which discharges out to this headwall. What we're proposing to do is to reconstruct this inlet so we could put a inlet filter bag in it and row it into our proposed stormwater conveyance piping system. So that would collect this area here, which is this portion of the driveway, a small portion of yard area, some patio area here, some stepping stone walkways here and some of the existing roof area. I do have some pictures that will help verify why I just showed. This is that driveway inlet right here that you can see. The yard inlet inlet is just to the left. That's located right here. What?
Not on the screen, Patrick.
Okay, I'll fix that. Do you see this picture?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the the driveway inlet that will be rolling to the stormwater management system. The other yard inlet that ties into it is located just to the left. This currently just charges to grade down by the headwall.
And the roof, Patrick, and the roof.
Yep, I do have the other image you showed. It does collect some areas of the roof from this location of the roof as well as this. And that's that area right there, which is, as Jeff said, 2,506 square foot of additional existing impervious. A couple other things I I want to note, we're no longer proposing any disturbance over here. Our client originally was going to put some geothermal wells for his main house. That proved to be prohibitively expensive. I we do want to note that he is making an effort to use some renewable energy for his proposed pool house. These are proposed geothermal wells located right here. And that's that's essentially what we're doing. We're collecting all this additional impervious services and rolling it to the Brettwood Stormwater Management System, which is a large buried stormwater system that will hold and detain the wire. As Jeff said, the bathtub analogy is the perfect way to explain it. This is an expensive stormwater management system. This is not a, you know, fly by night cheap system. That's it's a hefty system with a hefty insulation cost and material cost. It's not like a rain garden where, you know, it could fail if it's not maintained properly.
I think the point Patrick's trying to make is with the with the I I recognize this as a luxury pro- project. You know, to be able to put a pool in a pool house is is quite a blessing. And with that came, I thought, a responsibility to try to make sure that I improve the watershed. And so as part and parcel of installing this project, the instruction to the engineers was to make sure that we actually improve the watershed over the existing conditions. When we came to you the first time, I think we had improved, I think the design had improved it, but I don't think we had quantified it and we hadn't added all of the additional. So this plan really does aim to improve the watershed.
What is the effect on discharge rate and discharge volume?
The the volume. The volume cannot be reduced because it can't be infiltrated. There's just nowhere to infiltrate that water into the ground. So what we've done with with Mr. Mr. Marino's encouragement is to significantly over-design the underground system as well as capture all this additional impervious area so that the water, the discharge from the system will be almost imperceptible relative to, you know, normal stream flow, that it is just going to discharge over a much longer period of time. The problem is that the soils we tested, I think, four different locations on the property, and they just did not infiltrate. It's clay, silty material. And there's just, there's no way to infiltrate in soil that is not amenable to it. So what?
I understand. You could put in a vault storage system if you wanted to. It would just be, in my opinion, as a consumer, price. I'm going to say price prohibitive would be price insane. My question, though, is, is this going to change volume and is it going to change rate of flow? And if the answer is yes to either, it's going to be more or less.
The rate of flow will be significantly reduced. The volume is going to increase, but it's going to be over a much longer period of time, i.e. the bathtub analogy. That's what Mr. Marino has agreed to do is basically build the bathtub underground and let it slowly discharge to the stream.
Why would the volume increase over time? Why wouldn't it just be the same volume?
Because the.
Decreases over time. The rate of flow. So so Jack, I'm not a stormwater engineer, but in some ways I'm a good filter because I've had to learn this. So because this land doesn't perk, there will be additional volume. It's it's impossible to quantify because it doesn't perk. And if you were to see a rainstorm here, you would see this massive shed runoff into the stream. And so ultimately, if you think about it from just my own.
Where was it going before?
So it's rolling. You can see the stream. You can see the contour lines. And it rolls downhill directly into the stream from the upper elevations to the lower elevations. And so.
Right. But if the property doesn't perk now, where was the volume going before that there's going to be increased volume?
It was going into the stream. And so it it in one reason why I'm trying to do this is this is a very significant investment in the property. And so putting aside my concerns for the watershed, I don't want flooding here either. So the point is to over-design the management system to deal with the fact that it doesn't perk. We can't really tell you how much additional volume be because it's just impossible to tell you. But what we can tell you is the system is so over-designed, not only for the new impervious, but the additional 2,500 of existing impervious that the overall flow from that area into the stream will be reduced over time. It'll be managed more sophisticated, sophisticatedly. So it's not just going to run like a sheet. It's going to run into the drainage. It's going to be collected. And then as the water starts to decrease in the in any particular flood, then the volume starts to come out of the containment system. So that the the flooding situation should improve for both my purposes and your purposes. So that the flooding situation should improve for both my purposes and your purposes.
No, I understand what you're saying. I'm still unclear why volume is increasing in a property that doesn't perk, but.
I guess, Mr. Larkin, one of the things. The grass lawn areas on Mr. Marino's property, they will take a little bit of that rainfall when it comes. A lot of it's going to run off, but yeah, it'll take some. Like he said, like Mr. Marino said, the volume differential is challenging at best because we're using formulas that were created to mimic actual condition. Big thing is there is no way to infiltrate the water to discharge and get rid of it. And that's one of the things that I think a lot of the, a lot of municipalities are dealing with in terms of the way the ordinances were initially crafted from the first model ordinance, the DEP put out there for everybody to use. And when you realize then that there are situations, parts of a township or county or whatever, where the soils don't allow infiltration. I mean, yeah, you could come up with all kinds of ideas. I think the DEP Southeast Regional Office in Norris Town collects roof runoff in a big, big vessel inside the building as a demonstration project, and they use the flush toilets, gray water. Mr. Marina doesn't have the facility or whatever that he would need to use all that water. So like you said, the big thing is instead of a fire hose after the storm with all this water coming, it's a faucet that's just cracked open to let it. And one of the issues with volume was that you get too high a rate in the stream channel, it can cause erosion. So what, what we're proposing here is actually going to reduce the rate of discharge to that stream channel over the existing without the pool or anything.
And rate is the most important issue in that area. It's not high-volume storms that really kill us. I mean, they're not great, but it's, it's the one to just dump a ton of rain all at once that really caused flooding in that area. So rate is what I'm most sensitive to.
It, it's all the different areas come into the, to the stream channels. And then as you get to the bigger and bigger streams, they're taking even more. So, you know, this is something like putting a garden hose and saying, okay, we're just going to let it. It's not going to discharge in an hour or two. It may discharge in, you know, a day, who knows, depending on the storm. But what it's going to do, it's going to control it and not allow that, all that water to rush and get into the stream channel, causing erosion and other issues.
I do also want to add that we, we we provide more rate control than what is required by the Radnor Township Stormwater Ordinance. We actually are providing a better performance than what is required by the minimum rate control requirements of the ordinance.
Jack, are you done? May I ask a question? Okay, so remind me again how much more impervious this is and how much over our our threshold this is.
I think as far as the impervious goes, it's not an issue that we're exceeding the allowable impervious. But it's how we're, how we have to manage stormwater runoff from the impervious surfaces that are being proposed for the pool and the pool deck and all. It's, it's an issue where the way the ordinance is written, and this is kind of how DEP got things started several years back, was, okay, you've got to infiltrate the difference in volume for the two-year storm, which is typically the small, there, we use one-year storm data, but typically the two-year storm is like the base one, two, five, 10, up to 100. So the way DEP structured it was for the smallest storm, the two-year storm, which is also the more frequent storm, the difference, not the total, but the difference in runoff volume between existing and proposed conditions. In addition to controlling the rates. You see that the rate is like gallons per minute or cubic feet per second, whereas volume is just volume, just cubic feet. And the issue is the, the more, the higher rates of flow that are getting into the stream during the storm, they can combine and, and, you know, cause damage to the channel, cause maybe a little bit of flooding. And basically what Bill Marino is proposing to do is build a staging structure, an underground bed on his property that will fill up and then like a bat, you know, you could fill the bathtub up as high as the faucets allow. But when you pull the plug out of the drain, it only goes at a certain rate, as big as that hole is. Well, this system has a tiny bathtub hole on it that will let that water leak out slowly over time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nagorny. I completely understand that. I asked, I believe, how much more impervious are we adding? I'm sorry.
It's Consul Borowski, it's about 4,400 square feet of new impervious. In addition to that, the stormwater management system that I am proffering is 2,500 square feet on top of that.
And that, just to reconfirm, Mr. Hanlon, that green space that you pointed out to us earlier, that is an area of collection that was not in the prior plan, correct?
It was not qualified and it was not qualified in the prior plan. And we have added a actual stormwork conveyance pipe to directly route it to the piping system that routes it to the stormwater management system. So you are correct.
So that green area prior, in the prior plan was just flowing off the way it would have normally, correct?
It was just discharging off-site through the pipe that was running up this area up to the head wall. If you remember, the image I showed of this concrete head wall, there was a black HPE pipe coming out right at grade, that's that pipe.
And that's being reconfigured, you can see in the northeast corner of the property, that drain labeled LP1. That's now being picked up and put into the stormwater management system.
And this property drains down into Fenimore Woods, correct?
It drains down into the stream.
The stream at Fenimore Woods?
Yes, it runs, I'm not sure, I don't know, there's a couple of streams that intersect right there.
It runs, the site runs off to the stream here where it goes to Gulf Creek. For location purposes, Paul Road's over here. Chamonix Road is over here, and this is one of coming up this way.
Yeah, so you're definitely up, you're up on the hill. I was just over at Fenimore two weekends ago, so.
I think Fenimore leans down in this area, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Mr. Nocini, can I ask you, you know, all the gentlemen have been saying that, you know, you've been involved with this. Can I ask you what your thoughts are on the addition of this, this new system and the additional collection?
Sure, Commissioner. So at the last meeting, when the board had denied the waiver request, I had mentioned to the applicant and his engineers, you know, you need to do more. So some of this surface, you could collect and manage. So I just want to back up one second. So our stormwater management ordinance, anything over 1,500 square feet involves stormwater management. There are several components. One of those components is volume reduction. Right, that's reducing the amount of runoff that leaves the site. It goes into the ground. Increase in impervious surface means increase in volume, right? The more impervious surface you have, the more runoff will leave the site. By virtue of the fact that a site cannot infiltrate, it is impossible to reduce volume. What we're saying is, what the applicant's saying is, I can't put any water into the ground, I can't reduce volume. So again, our ordinance says if you can't meet the infiltration rates of point five, 0.5 inches per hour, you must request a waiver from the board. What it doesn't say is, do you need to do anything else? It just says, request a waiver. Now, the board has said you must do more, you must come back with a plan. So we have no set process that says an applicant must do X to make up for the fact that they can't do groundwater infiltration. So in this case, I'm not his engineer, but I give them, I say, the board turned you down last time. You need to do something more. You have rooftop, you have driveway that is uncontrolled. Why don't you consider that or anything else they may wish to? I provide them ideas, which I think my goal is not to get them to waiver, my goal is to help the situation should the board offer, agree to the waiver. So the applicant has agreed to basically control over 50% of his new impervious, it's going to be detained. There's only so much you can do when your ground can't perk. Rain garden, rain garden has limitations. This system is designed, as Patrick said, are ordinances for the next two years, this is over-designed. So in a big storm, no, you cannot reduce volume. That's why they're here. They are going to manage more runoff. Where that line is drawn, there is no line because there are no parameters in our ordinance. But I will say, I think this applicant has made a good effort at trying to address the situation, understanding that they cannot infiltrate. I mean, we've had folks come before this board and offer a rain barrel or a small rain garden, right? This goes way over and above that. He's going to manage through rate control over 50% more than the proposed impervious. Like I say, without a parameter, I can't tell you that it meets or doesn't meet something. This is totally subjective on the board. I think that the applicant has made a good faith effort to do so to address what they, their shortcomings.
Can I just ask one more question and then I will yield to my colleagues? Mr. Hanlon, you mentioned that this system is much better than a rain garden, which would, you know, need to be cleaned out. What makes this system so much better than maybe something else?
So, or is this going off of our discussions with Steve Nocini? Rain gardens require maintenance. And, you know, it's very easy to not maintain a rain garden, plantings could die. Sediment could rush into the rain garden. But another thing that could potentially cause a rain garden to fail and not provide the required benefits is that groundwater being held in the rain garden could freeze. And Steve, Steve was saying that that could become a limiting zone where, where a stormwater can't infiltrate into the soils of the rain garden. If you're not familiar with what rain garden is, it's a small basin. But beneath that, you have amended soils, which actually is the planting mix, which is what actually makes a rain garden, a rain garden. It's, that's the soil where the plantings are all, you know, planted in. If water freezes in that during, you know, during the winter, you lose that storage space. You also lose the ability for plantings to thrive in that environment. And it could become a limiting zone where essentially you have a hard surface at the bottom of the rain garden.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Unless anybody else, there's so few commissioners here, I guess. Unless there's anybody else like to go, I'd like to have a few comments.
But I'd like to, but I'll go after you, Rich. Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Catherine.
So, I mean, I'm new to this, I'm new to this property, this sort of thing. So as we all know, we have a lot of problems with water in Radnor. And so to me, the, what I'm trying to get here is that was there a lot of flooding? Or was there flooding, you know, in these torrential rainstorms we've been having the past few years on your property? Was, you know, was there flooding or was there flooding into your neighbor's property off of your property?
Yes, Commissioner Agnew, there's, there is flooding here. And quite honestly, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to. So you're only looking at a picture.
No, no, just please, there was flooding before. Okay.
Yes.
Now, if you make these additions that you want to make to your property, will the flooding get worse?
I'll let my engineers handle that, I think, but my understanding and my instructions to them was to improve the watershed.
I understand what your instructions were. The issue is what will happen? So.
I'd be interested in Steve Nocini's take on whatever the engineer's answer is as well.
Yeah. Jeff?
I will, I will share with you, Ms. Agnew, welcome to the board, by the way.
Thank you.
We have some, we have some worksheets in the stormwater report. And the first one that's on the, immediately find the narrative, which is a couple of pages of, like it says, narrative at the beginning of the report. The existing the existing pre-developed runoff, runoff from the developed areas of Mr. Marino's property. 1.22 cubic feet per second, 1.22 cubic feet per second. The thing that always kind of hits people is when they find out that one cubic foot per second is about 450 gallons a minute. Lot of water. So the existing pre-developed rate is 120, 1.22. The proposed rate out of this system we're putting in, 0.17 CFS. We are, we are reducing it by a factor of 10. A little more than a factor of 10.
That's your proposed, you know that that's what it's going to do?
Based, yes, based on the formulas, et cetera, that we use. Obviously, there, these formulas have been developed over the years.
To do any experimentation, did you experiment at all? To see if that's.
There's no, there's no way to experiment, but we use standard equations that have been used for years that are approved by DEP, by the local townships, et cetera. And we are reducing, just reducing the pre-to-post development flows by a factor of 10.
Steve? Mr. Nocini? I think.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Larkin asked you about, you know, your comment on what.
I'm sorry, I had to step away for a sec. I apologize.
It was the most riveting part of the whole meeting so far. I can't believe it. So I had asked Mr. Nagorny, basically, how is it now? And after you add the pool, the pool house and all that sort of thing, is it going to be worse? And he stated that before the construction or or these new additions to the property, the flow rate was 1.22 cubic feet per second, more than 450 gallons per minute. The proposed rate, as in its theory, this is the proposed rate with these accommodations will be 0.7 cubic feet per second. So.
1.7, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I said, 0.17 cubic feet per second. So an improvement in theory. So my question was really like, okay. Is, can you prove it beyond the theory? But I understand if you can't. So that's your, I think Commissioner Borowski had asked you about your take on that.
So again, I think and I, I did, I did hear that, understanding that our ordinance does not provide guidance on what to do at this point, right? So the ordinance says you can't infiltrate, go to the board and ask for a waiver. And then the board says, we want to see you do more. Which is valid and I agree with 100%. So understanding that there are no requirements, nothing objective for an applicant to do because you're going to see another applicant that might do things differently and they come up every meeting. So the amount of runoff that leaves the site will be increased, the volume, right? That will be increased because there is no physical way to reduce that. Our ordinance has a volume reduction portion, which means groundwater infiltration. By virtue of the fact that Mr. Marino's property cannot infiltrate, he cannot reduce the amount of runoff that comes off his site. We also have another component to our stormwater management ordinance, which is the flow rate, rate control. The whole thing Mr. Nagorny spoke about with the bathtub and all that. So what that does is it takes the runoff, puts it in a system, whatever that system may be. And it outflows at a specified rate, which is usually based on the orifice, orifices, orifice The orifice or orifices or if I in the system. So. What I had said to Commissioner Barowski and I would say to you, Commissioner Agnew, as well as the chair or the president. I think this. Applicant, this resident has done. An adequate job of trying to compensate for the fact. That he cannot infiltrate. Groundwater. Like I said, we've had folks come with many ideas. Now, this is a decent amount of runoff, you know, we're, we're impervious. We're looking at four thousand plus square feet, four thousand, four hundred and fifty one to be exact. But I think he has made a good faith effort. To. Manage more runoff off of his property. So will there be an increase in volume? Yes. Will the rate that it leaves the property be reduced? Yes. So Commissioner Larkin's original question. Which he was. I think he was looking for a no, yes, answer is a yes, yes, answer. You physically cannot reduce the volume because the ground can't take it. But he's doing another option. Which is to reduce the flow. So it'll be. Contained in the system. Mr. Hanlon noted and let out at a specified rate. So I, I think he is doing in a. He is trying very hard to accommodate for the fact that he cannot infiltrate.
So it'll just be more water running into this basin, this collection thing, and they just let out slower.
So he had to increase the size of the basin from his original plan. Is that not correct, Mr. Nagorny? To accommodate, so. The original underground system was X cubic feet in size. Now it's some factor greater than X to accommodate the control of more runoff.
And since there's a pause, Mr. Northini, I'll just jump in and, and indicate.
Wasn't a pause. It wasn't a pause. I, I was waiting for Ms. Agnew to be complete and then I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Christian Booker.
Okay. So Mr. Mr. Nagorny and, and Mr. Marino, I. Thank you for being here and I understand your, your issue. I've sat through this issue for eight years. Straight. And have discussed this at length. The. The, the main concern. That I have. And that is. The, the, the problem is not for the two-year storm or the four-year or the 10-year storm that that basin and that. Bathtub is designed for, but it's the, it's the 50-year storm or the. Hour and a half or two hours of hundred-year storm that we've been getting. From time to time. So. The issue is not the rate reduction when you've got a small enough storm. That sounded eerie. The issue is the fail, the, when the system is overwhelmed. In the large storms. And I think that. Ms. Barowski pointed out that this is, this heads down to Fenimore and also onto Eastern. Where I've had complaints. Of, of flooding as well already in that area. And again, it's not the two-year storm. That's a problem. You, I, I understand your point. The two-year, the four-year, the 10-year storm. You will slow down. And discharge it over a greater rate of time. Over a greater time and reduce the rate over that time. When it is overwhelmed. Everything will head down. And it will be whatever that marginal bit worse is. So. Again, Mr. Nagorny and Mr. Marino, you understand that when we get hundreds of waiver requests. Every one of them makes it a little bit worse. And every one of them challenges our stormwater systems that just that much more. I thank you for your comments at the beginning when you noted. Yes, this will make, this adds to the volume. And this will add. Some, some volume. Of additional water when we get the major storms and that is what the issues that we're having is. Every one of these contributes to that. Also, I wanted to point out that. This system will still need to be cleaned out and maintained. As a matter of fact, it's even harder to maintain because than, than a. Rain garden because you can't see it. It's going to be underground. When that thing gets filled up with silt, which it will. Maybe even right away because during construction we get a lot of silt in these things. That silt all has to be removed. We've had several. Projects that Steve has worked on. North Wayne Field comes to mind. Pulling out. Hundreds of cubic yards of, of material that filled up in the, the stormwater, underground stormwater systems. That will be an issue here in, in the future. So. My, my question to you is. What? Should the board of commissioners do when every person? Continues to make. The stormwater situation worse by their little bit of additional. Impervious surface.
So let, let me, let me first deal with the, the maintenance issue. First of all, the, the, the maintenance on this property, as you might imagine, is pretty spectacular as is. It's a lot of maintenance. And I keep on top of it and keep all the drains cleaned. Mostly because it's a significant investment and it's the responsible thing to do for my family. So we are putting in an additional significant investment. And if I don't do the maintenance. That property runs a risk of having floodwaters. So I am completely incented and aligned with you. To make sure that the maintenance is ongoing. And it's all just part of a schedule that I would. You know.
And I didn't mean to say that you wouldn't. I'm just saying that this is. There is maintenance with this. The statement was that a rain garden. Has maintenance. This, this is not magically without maintenance. This is as much or more maintenance and it's harder to see. So it's easy to forget.
Yeah, no, listen, I, I, I understand and I, I pushed my engineers hard on that because I wanted to know what I was signing up for. So there is regular maintenance. But. You know. Got my commitment that I'm going to do it and you've got my investment that is at risk if I don't. So. That should give you comfort. And I also understand the issue of. Incremental. Additions to the watershed and, and I can tell you, we've, we've done what we can to, to reduce the flow. I don't know what else we can do. I will say. I did hear that there might be some concerns from the neighbors. If you were looking at the package, I. Canvased my immediate neighbors and I think there are eight letters of support in the file. So. There, there's no objection. In fact, there's, there's support from the neighbors for, for the project. Your main issue.
I did see that. Thank you.
Yeah, so all of my immediate neighbors. Karen Lambert and Charlie Ryan across the street, plus neighbors up the street, plus neighbors, other neighbors in North Wayne. I think there's. Seven or eight letters of support in the file. I'll let Jeff deal with, because I don't know the answer to the question of, of the capacity of the tank and, and the annual predictions for. For the severity of the storms.
Thank you, Bill. As far as siltation, those kinds of things, there are access. Covers. Where you can see down into the system. Certainly if serious siltation or whatever. Occurred, that would have to be addressed. However, during construction. Any, any inlets or openings that are connected to this bed, if, when it's in the ground. Will be sealed during construction. To prevent the entry of sediment, so any of that kind of stuff. And we are also proposing. Basically, trash basket, leaf guard baskets that are going to go in a couple of the inlets up near the driveway, et cetera. And I, and I just want to, I, I want to re-stress the point that. For the, the hundred-year storm, which of course that's the big one where we get that seven, eight inches and, and it's all over the place. We, we are reducing the. The rate of runoff from the property by a factor of 10. So whereas right now, from the developed areas of Mr. Marino's property, you're getting one point two two CFS now, as is. After the pool's built with this system in, it's going to be. Point one seven. Or. A, a factor of 10 less of a runoff rate. So he is significantly.
Jeff.
Contributing to preservation, the stream channel, et cetera.
That was for a two-year storm event.
No, I'm sorry. That was for the hundred. I was talking about the difference in volume with two. No, that's the hundred-year storm. He's reducing.
So you, you designed for a hundred-year storm. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That's the maximum one we typically do.
It's designed for a hundred-year storm. It's, it's part of my frustration is I, I don't know what else I can do.
I, I, I don't, I don't think, no, that, that, our requirements are not a hundred-year. You've talked about a two-year.
It's designed for the.
Hundred-year storm, I guarantee you.
It's designed for a hundred-year storm with an additional 2,500 square feet of existing impervious pickup.
The reduction, Mr. Booker, I apologize by mistake.
It's not the reduction. You, what? What level? Our, our, our ordinance calls, and you said it, a two-year storm event.
I refer to the two-year storm because that's what the volume calculations in Pennsylvania are required typically to be calculated on. But no, we are controlling up to the hundred-year storm and at the hundred-year storm, we have that factor of 10 reduction in the flow rate. For the hundred-year.
I, I don't, I don't believe you. So, so Steve. You're saying that these, these guys have a tank large enough for a hundred-year storm event?
So Commissioner, what? What Mr. Nagorny is saying. When he talks about the two, it's the net two-year event we're talking about, but the final design in our ordinance is the 100. So Gannett Fleming has reviewed this package. And, you know, based on, and their memo is included in the, in the packet. And what they have not been a, what the applicant has not been able to meet. Is the. Volume reduction requirements, but they're meeting the other requirements of the ordinance for 4,000, for an increase in 4,451 square feet.
But they are not meeting the event of capturing all the water from that for a hundred-year event.
What they're not meeting is the volume reduction requirement.
So when that system is full, all that volume of water goes through the, goes straight over the system, right into the, into the storm.
As would with any, any underground or basin itself, once the system is full. It's not really functioning regardless of its outlet. It's, it's not doing it.
And that's, that's what will occur when we have the big storms.
Well, what, what, Melly, you're, and I'm not here to advocate for the applicant or against the applicant. I, I'm here for the board and the residents and the manager. So again, I'm just flipping through the package. Ganna Fleming's final review letter was. Request a waiver from the above-mentioned sections of the ordinance. So. Based on what I'm seeing from Gannett. They met the other requirements of the ordinance. They then said, we can't meet the volume reduction requirement, so we'll go over and above. On our rate control. But any system wants it's overwhelmed and. Mr. Nagorny and Mr. Hanlon all share the same license that myself and the reviewers have. If they were to be disingenuous, they would be risking their license as well as their livelihood. So. The plans are signed and sealed. They've been reviewed. And again, I'm not advocating for. Momany or Mr. Marino. I, you know, I work for the residents of Radnor Township. I work for the township manager and I work for the board. As we all do, I'm trying to provide information or input. Onto the situation.
I, 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 Steve, I've come on, we've gone through this for years. And, and I know that, you know, your, your language is very careful. This system will be overwhelmed when it is in the large storms. And it could be a 10-year or a 15-year or a 20. We, we've been getting storms where that have an intense amount of flow of water that's dumped on the. Into the area and that's where we get the flooding. Now, you're right, they can't meet the volume reduction. Matter of fact, and they, they've stated there's some marginal increase in volume because of. Forty-four hundred square feet of impervious. Has to be.
Oh, there's no doubt. So as I said, Commissioner.
And, and, and as we know. It's not the immediate neighbors. Because they're generally will be okay with it because it's not an issue. It's the collection and it's the. Quantification, it's the, the continual compilation of all the. Incremental little bit more volume down at the bottom. Down the hill, which is the problem, which is in Fenimore Park, which is in Eastern. So that's the concern and there's no way to quantify everyone's little bit. So. The, the issue. Is when will the storm get, what store, what size storm? How often will the system be, that, that tank will be filled at one point? And they won't be able to take any water. It will just run off. And my view is that that will, that will occur and that will occur once every two, three, four, five years. And those are the times when we have the issue. And that this. Stormwater waiver, along with the hundred others that I've sat through, all add marginally to that flooding issue downstream. That's why I voted last time and I think that's why the board. Voted last time. To, to not allow this. So I, I appreciate the. The, the description. I would like. To know exactly. How much? Water and what size storm? How often was the prediction that the, the system will fill up? Because it won't, it's not big enough to take any storm that comes. Including, you know, the flood of Noah. But. I, I know it's oversized than what our requirements are. So. I understand what you're, what you're going for. My concern is that it's, it's, it continues to make things worse. The only other thing that we talked about, Steve, and I asked John Rice about this before, and the issue is. What happens if this is denied again?
It can keep coming back as many times as they want to.
Okay. Or at that point is it, does it go to court? Is, and do we have an issue of a taking?
It could. I mean, this is not an evidentiary hearing. Like a zoning hearing board hearing. But. We haven't had a situation. I can't think of any situations other than. When it's been a subdivision or land development where stormwater waivers were denied. Where we've had the individual house. I mean, I think the property owner's got a right to. Some due process. Given the fact that. He has a property or she has a property, whoever it is, that basically. Is frozen.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, John. My, so the issue is. And Steve has talked about this before, is that basically we have to grant every waiver or else we're going to have a taking. And we have to have the infiltration in, we have to have the infiltration requirement in the ordinance because that's a state requirement. And. I asked you about this. I would like to really understand exactly what the legal. You know, the legal analysis is because I think we haven't really looked at that.
I don't think it's, I don't think talking about a taking, Rich. And we probably, we probably ought to discuss this in executive session, just as an overall. Policy issue. It's not a taking, it's a limit, like zoning limits. Individuals' ability to build larger buildings on their property unless they get a variance, which could be denied. And then you litigate that. This is very similar to that. You know, these properties are, are, are. Complying with the zoning. Impervious surface ratio requirements. It's just that they can't because of the increased impervious surface. Meet the stormwater requirements.
And I, I, and as a matter of fact. I would be willing to give every homeowner a waiver. That's the fact is if, if this was not in the ordinance. I wouldn't vote against these things. I would give every, every. I wouldn't vote against these things, I would give every, every homeowner who came in with a project who wanted a waiver, I would give them one. Because if we give it to some who can't park, why not give it to everyone?
The, the, the stormwater has, the stormwater.
And I know, the answer is, well, you have to require it.
Right, and you, you also have to have a, a way for homeowners that can't meet it to seek relief. That's part of it.
A, and we do have that, that's, but again, if, if, why not allow everyone to seek relief, that's, we have similarly situated um, applicants, and some of them who, whose property perks, we make them spend the money and make, we make them perk, we make them put in the equipment. Now, in this case, uh, Mr. Marino is going to install something to, uh, um, to manage the stormwater, and I understand that, but if we give waivers, um, my view is that we should give waivers to all, that's the, the substantive issue, we can't do that, I understand that. Um, my, my only issue is, how many times did we come back for this, so? Uh, again, the, the waivers continue to put a burden on an already flooding Radnor. We have massive amounts of projects, tens of millions dollars worth of stored water issues, uh, according to staff, that need to be addressed, every one of these makes it worse. And, and we, every one of them is an issue. So, that's the concern, and what can, what actually is going to be the legal recourse if we stop, we, we should, we should, we should have a moratorium as long as we can solve our stormwater problems, is my view.
Can I ask some questions? Rich, you done?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, Mr. Marino, just a quick question, you're gonna be adding forty-four-hundred square feet of impervious, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then these questions are gonna be for Mr. Norsini. In a two-year storm, will the runoff be better or worse?
So, is two answers to that question. The volume will be increased, but the rate of flow will be reduced.
Okay, so what's the equilibrium where both the rate will be increased? Um, I mean, is there a breakpoint, fifty-year or a hundred-year?
No, I mean, they can't reduce volume, so that really leaves the equation, that's always gonna be, if the question is, does it increase volume, it's always yes.
Okay.
If it's an inch of rain or five inches of rain.
Okay.
What they are proposing is to reduce the volume, that reduce the rate that the water leaves the site, so instead of gushing off, it leaves at a pre-described, a predetermined rate.
Okay, so at a two-year storm, the rate will go down, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, from the, and what he has told us, the, the rate of flow will be reduced for those storms.
How about a hundred-year storm, will the rate be down or, or up?
Mr. Nagorny?
Yes, it will be reduced significantly by a factor of ten.
Okay, and then add up, uh, do, is, is there such thing, is it two-hundred-year storm?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
There, there could be.
Okay, at a two, at a two-hundred-year storm, would the rate be increased or decreased?
Well, the rate would be decreased, um, but we don't go that far, we're not required to, you typically go to the hundred. But just as a point of order or understanding, a hundred-year storm is actually a storm with a probability of point zero one, one in a hundred. And it's really probabilities, because you can have a, you can have two or three-hundred-year storms in one year. Just so folks understand that, but no, we are controlling the rate, the post-development rate for all the storms is reduced significantly, because Mr. Marino is willing to add fifty-six percent more impervious over and above the new pool that he's doing, to control that and release all of that control through the underground.
Sure, so, yes, thanks, uh, Mr. Murray, yeah, I mean, I, I worked on Wall Street for twenty years, so the Black Swan events happen a lot more often than, uh, the statisticians say that they do.
Yeah.
Um, so, so the rate is, is always gonna go down, or is that not the case? The volume's gonna go up, because you have more impervious, I get it. Is there a point where the rate will not go down, the rate will start to rise?
Well, what happens is, we, we design it like a bathtub, and then there's a certain size outlet, so.
Okay, so, so the answer is yes, but you don't know what, what year storm that would be.
Well, if you get up to like a five-hundred or a thousand-year, uh, we just don't get into doing the computations, it's impossible. But, we're so significantly, we're reducing the hundred-year rate of runoff from the developed areas by over one whole CFS, down to point one-seven, so it's a trickle coming out, and again, all your stormwater structures, your culverts, your pipes, bridges are designed for the flow rate. Not that volume's not important, but that's what it's all about, while we're significantly reducing Mr. Marino's contribution to that flow rate by putting in this.
All right, um, is this in a floodplain?
Uh, I believe it is not in a floodplain, there is, uh.
It is not. Okay, uh, uh, yes or no would be better than what, uh, believe, so the answer is no, it's not in a floodplain?
No, and it's also outside the area and buffer.
Okay, and then, um, I, I guess, Mr. Marino, how long have you been on the property for?
Uh, about approximately four years.
Okay, and in those four years, have you gone and asked for a previous waiver for stormwater relief?
No.
Uh, Mr. Norsini, you've been, how long have, you've been at the township for a while, correct?
Uh, ten years this June.
Okay. And, to your knowledge, has this property been given any kind of waivers?
So Commissioner, we only go back one year, we go back.
Yep, that's, and that's, yeah, that's pardon, I don't mean to interrupt, that's why I'm asking, because if every year you're gonna ask for forty-four-hundred square feet impervious add-on, um, and you wait three-hundred-and-sixty-six days, uh, you talk about incremental, um, you know, there's a way to get around the system, so, to your knowledge, I guess, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, have you, you know that this property's been?
Uh, Commissioner, I, I wouldn't know without going back to the records, I, I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head.
I, I can help a little bit, perhaps.
Sure.
Barry, I, I know they did a development here in ninety-two, and that's the last time there was any significant impervious added to the, the lot was subdivided, there were four houses put up, and they did a stormwater management system then, but since then, my understanding is, there's been no development and no additional request for waivers.
And then, if that system fails, um, what recourse does, I guess, Mr. Norsini or, or Mr. Oh, Mr. Rice, i, i, if that fails, what recourse does the township have to make him stay compliant with the current system and not say, well, yeah, it's, you, because he's going, uh, beyond what he could do, does he have the right at some point to just go back and do the bare minimum, I, I don't know if I'm phrasing my question correctly.
So Mr. Rice's office prepares for these types of projects, uh, a maintenance agreement on the stormwater management system. And, that maintenance agreement is based on these plans and whatever's in there, uh, whatever that system is, and the way it's written, uh, Solicitor Rice and his office do a great job. This owner has to maintain it, if they don't maintain it, we have the right to enter, and we also have the right to do work and go after the property owner for the cost of whatever we have to do, and we could lean the property.
Okay.
We haven't had to do that, but that exists, that agreement exists, nobody gets their grading permit approved until the solicitor's office provides that agreement and the applicant signs it.
Okay, so for that, for the current system, now during those negotiations, if, and I, I, I think, Mr. Marino, you will keep it, if you do get, get this granted. Um, would Mr. Marino have the right to say, look, I want farm being on, uh, I wanna negotiate this down to what the minimum is, or it's, it is what it is?
Now, this is a waiver requ, I'll let John talk since he's here.
Yeah, the, the, the plans, I mean, the way it works, a set of plans will be approved by the engineers. If it contains a waiver being granted, that'll be shown on the plans, but the construction drawings will be on the plans, it's probably two or three sheets. And then the stormwater agreement references those plans as an exhibit, and has all the elements that Steve just explained, enforcement rights, right to enter, right to inspect, right to lean the property if the homeowner doesn't maintain it. And, uh, nothing gets negotiated, it's the, the plans are the plans, there's no, you know, this is a Cadillac plan and this is a Yugo plan, I wanna do this Yugo plan, uh, it's whatever the engineers approve with any waivers, and that gets recorded against the real estate, so the next homeowner that buys the property is also subject to the same stormwater obligation.
Thank you.
Uh, just, just a, just follow-up here, so, how big is the tank, the underground tank that's gonna be installed, is it twenty-six by fifteen?
Be with you in one second.
We are proposing a system twenty-six feet long by fifteen and a half feet wide, currently, the, uh, township stormwater ordinance, only the volume inside the, the crates are eligible to be credited for stormwater volume, that's by the township ordinance. Uh, these are three-foot-high, uh, Brettwood, uh, tanks, they're one-hundred percent, uh, void space, so uh, these are three-foot by w, um, one and a half foot, uh, crates by three-foot, and as you can see here, this is the, uh, the footprint. I believe I have a number of chambers, um, on one of the other sheets. Uh, it's, um, nine rows by eight.
What's the volume that it, that it holds?
I can calculate that for you right now. The total storage volume of these Brettwood crates uh, looks like nine-hundred-and-seventy-two cubic feet.
Nine-hundred-and-seventy-two cubic feet. Mr. Nagorny says that nine-hundred-and-seventy-two cubic feet um, is designed for a hundred-year storm, so where's that calculation of the cubic feet that will flow in at a hundred-year storm rain event?
We included the, the HydroCAD printouts in, uh, our submission to the township. We wrote, uh, it through HydroCAD using, uh, the rational method. Uh, we have a, um, system of orifices in the, uh, outlet control box, that's a pretty standard stormwater management strategy. We do have a small drain at the very bottom to ensure that the entire system drains, because there is no infiltration. But stormwater is designed to fill up the system to the top of this fifteen-inch diameter riser, and then it'll go out through the culvert, w, with, again, with a small drain providing a small amount of drainage, uh, going out to that culvert pipe. This orifice is two inches.
Patrick, Patrick, I think Commissioner Booker is asking for, it's re, he's really looking for a reference, he's saying, you've got about a thousand
cubic feet.
Cubic feet, where is the concordance between a thousand cubic feet and the, the, uh, probability of a hundred-year storm, where does that, where's that reference?
Uh, we, like, as I was saying, it's the stormwater management calculations that we submitted to the township.
Using, is that using the, you, is that using best current engineering best practices, is that?
Yeah, so we're, we're using the rational method, we're using a program that is allowed by Radnor Township HydroCAD. The, this is a program right here. Uh, one-point-oh-seven cubic feet per second is flowing into the system, and only point-one-seven cubic feet is flowing out of, of the system during the hundred-year storm, uh, that's a, and we have, um, you can see, these are the, um, this is where we are getting the, the rate control, um, calculations that is required by the Radnor Township Stormwater Management Ordinance.
Well, I, I still can't see all that you, you pointed to, but didn't Mr. Nagorny say it was four-hundred-and-sixty cubic feet per minute at a two-year storm coming in, earlier tonight?
Miss, miss, Mr. Booker, uh, four-hundred-and-fifty gallons per minute is the equivalent of one cubic feet per second. That's all that I was talking about there, we usually think about flow and gallons a minute, et cetera. But no, the hundred-year storm will come, it will fill up the tank, and it will slowly release it as the calculations verify.
Where, where's the calculation?
In the stormwater report, that's, part of it's on the screen right there. All this stuff was submitted and Steve reviewed it.
I, I, I know, but the commissioners haven't reviewed it. And, my understanding is that this system of a thousand cubic feet would collect something like a ten-year storm event, which would be an inch, an inch, so you have to go by, what is it, an inch per hour or two inches per hour? What's the volume, what would it pick up? And so, where are the tables that show how many inches per hour for each storm? And the calculation of the volume that this is gonna be designed to pick up?
It's all in the stormwater report, just as we're reprised and preparing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Booker, I'm not, I'm not trying to be, uh, short with you, I'm just saying, that's what we do, we prepare the report, we design the drawings, we submit it for review, but it's all in the stormwater report.
Well, why can't you show it to us and the public right now, then?
Well.
Let me make sure, um, can, can you see what's on, on my screen right here?
I mean, that's the hundred years, that's the hundred-year storm for the discharge from this system, PCSM, post-construction storm, Pat, put that back please, thank you, um, right here is the hundred-year storm computations. You see the inflow, one-point-zero-seven CFS up near the top there, then the outflow is point-one-seven CFS. So we have reduced the rate of the hundred-year runoff by a factor of ten, so that, um, well, technically, it may not be quite a factor of ten, but, um, reducing it so that it is only trickling out, and the volume storage holds it like a bathtub and lets it seep out. But this is how stormwater is designed these days, I mean, we've been doing it this way for years.
So guys, I'm sorry, it's now eight-twenty-one PM, we've been talking about this for over an hour. I think that we've all made our positions fairly clear, I hear what you guys are saying. Commissioner Booker, it's, it's not that I'm indifferent to the points that you're making, it's that they're not gonna inform your vote, we know how you're gonna vote.
No, I think.
No, guys, I'm, guys, no, no, we're, we're just gonna, we're gonna need to come to a vote now, I'm gonna call, is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Okay, I'm gonna call the votes, all in favor, say aye.
I'm gonna say aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes, it looks like four to one with Moira, it looks like frozen from the stillness of her video. You're moving now, Moira, was that a yea or a nay?
Uh, that's a nay for me.
Got it, four to two. Um, guys, thank you very much, um, we're gonna move on now to item three C, two-thirty-five Pembroke Avenue, waiver of the Stormwater Management Ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there somebody here who can give us some information about item three C?
Um, yeah, this is Bob Wager, I'm the project engineer. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, we've got you.
Wait a minute. Okay, all right, my screen's kinda fluttering here, um, yeah, I'm the project engineer, um, I have a feeling that, uh, this is gonna be very similar to what we just went through with the last uh, project, but let me, uh, let me, uh, just give you in a. Project, but let me, let me just give you in a nutshell. This project involves a lot that had some existing structures on it. It had a driveway and most of that is is going to be removed. And a new house and driveway can be added. The initial site had about three thousand square feet of impervious cover. We're proposing about thirty-seven hundred square increase of like seven hundred square feet of impervious cover. Plus the. Measures taken due for another eight hundred of square feet of future impervious. So basically, this project is is doesn't have near the impervious. Surface that the latest project did, but it's the same principles where. We can't recharge the water because of the bad soil conditions and a high water table. So we're, we're gonna control all the storms from the one to the hundred year storm. And make sure that we release rate on the site is less. In the post-development than it is pre-development.
And I'd just like to brief, hey, Bob, I'd just like to briefly introduce myself. I am the homeowner. My name's John McCurdy of London Radnor for twenty years. And this is twenty plus years, I think. And yeah, it's it's a different situation than Commissioner Booker mentioned. In the past that he said every everyone makes it worse. We're adding only seven hundred feet here. Not forty-four hundred and we we are putting in the underground basins. This is our second time in front of the committee. We came back about a month ago and we were asked to go back and improve the situation again. Which we did. So I'm not not, I'm not an engineer, Bob, just looking to get my family in the house, but you can take it from there.
Okay, well, basically, we first of all, we started off with a with a rain garden that nobody liked. So we went to the underground basin. But there were items that the engineer didn't like either. Our discharge was too close to the road. And and too close to the new driveway, the existing driveway. So what we did was I redesigned, moved the basin further away, but also kept it. Moved it a little further away from some large existing trees to make sure that they didn't get harmed. We're pretty limited as to where we can put the basin because it's a. The way the lot is sloped and it has to really has to be in the front. So so I redesigned everything and resubmitted and and I, the engineer has has reviewed most of it, I believe. And only had a couple of comments which I've already taken care of. But yeah, I we're not, our this project is certainly not going to. Do any, do any harm. All the all the discharges from the from the lot are less than they they were. Before we got there, so. That's really in a nutshell. That's what it's all about.
Is anybody else gonna comment yet? I'm sorry, were you gonna go? I I didn't know if Mr. Mercini was gonna go first.
No, ma'am.
Okay, so.
As a matter, I think of self-preservation stays out of these until we bring them in.
Mr. Richard, I I walked up to the property. There's a a large garage carriage house. Someone lived in there or is living in there. Is that coming down?
That's all. Yeah, there's everything on the lot except some of the driveway in front.
So there's actually two driveways. There's a driveway off of Aberdeen and there's a driveway off of Pembroke.
Not not.
Well, what it is was a double lot where the house itself, the main house that was there actually transverse those lots. So what you've done is you've drawn this like weird kind of little dog leg around, right? It's it's kind of weird. Let's face it.
Commissioner, what is, was, was two lots. Yeah, it was always two lots. There's a lot on Aberdeen and there's a lot on Pembroke.
But in fact, the house, the main house that was there or is still there. Transverse really both lots and it's the way you've drawn it around, made this kind of weird drawing that makes it. Look like two lots.
Yeah, well, the subdivision was always there. We didn't change the lot the lot lines at all.
Okay.
It was always two lots and they were always subdivided. We changed no lot lines at all. When I purchased the parcel. On Pembroke, I didn't have to change anything, but. That's that's nothing was changed there.
Okay, so you have this big. Carriage house or something back there. That's going to come down, you're saying, right? And the driveway is going to be dug up, but you're going to put the driveway back.
Small driveway.
I'm sorry.
Wager, could you pull up the plans, please? I I'm working on a rent borrowed computer here. I.
It's okay. I I know what it looks like. I live four doors away.
Got it. Yeah, the drive, the drive, there's a, there's a long driveway right now that goes all the way from Pembroke back back to that garage.
Flows down Pembroke. The water that flows down Pembroke now during one of these big storms is tremendous. And so any addition to it would be deleterious to the neighbors on St. David's. And your neighbors on Pembroke, and I don't know about your neighbors on Aberdeen. So I.
Not nothing like Paul Paul Road where I live.
We're not talking about Paul Road. We're talking about Pembroke Avenue. We're talking about the third ward that I represent. And the increase in water and further damage to people's properties, even slightly by slightly adding, is. It can be catastrophic and it's and it's not every hundred years now. It's every two years. So I to say that it'll only be slight, I'm kind of quote, Commissioner Booker, every marginal piece. It just builds and builds and builds. So I can't, I've walked, I I didn't walk on the property because. Would be trespassing, but I walked up to the property. You can see straight from Pembroke what, how the design of the property is. And it just doesn't seem to really help anything, but you're going to try to build more on there.
Well, I believe the I I believe the impervious would be. Would be increased, in addition, I said, but would be increased, but but the the discharge is going to be much less. And Bob has those calculations which he shared with us, Mr. Norsini. I mean, the problem now in that area is it floods. You get a bad rain and it floods and that's exactly. And the the controls we put in place and for the second time back now are going to improve that situation. The rate is going to be drastically reduced. There is no stormwater on that property now. That property in Pembroke with that garage in the back and that big driveway, there's no stormwater on there whatsoever. So we're adding slightly more impervious, but we're adding a lot of stormwater management. So any way you slice it, this is a, this is going to be an improvement.
I'm not sure I agree with you, Mr.
Well, there's McCurdy. Yeah, it's a roughly a third of an acre lot, maybe point four. There's no, no stormwater management on it now at all, nothing. So whatever hits, it runs off. We're putting these big underground basins in, so we're gonna improve what's there now. I'm not an engineer, but I've been through this up to the last meeting and with Bob, my engineer who's on here, so. It's, we're going from nothing to something.
How big of a structure are you building?
Small. It's about a.
And what is it? And that garage you're taking?
And Harb, Harb, Harb already approved this structure.
The structure, the historic, the structure you're taking down.
Uh, I'm not, not sure where the square foot for that.
The impervious on the lot right now is around three thousand square feet. And when we're done, there's going to be thirty-seven hundred square feet.
So you're gonna increase it.
Seven hundred square feet, which if that was just an increase with along with the ordinance, that wouldn't even require a stormwater management. If we're just increasing our previous, but since we're tearing it down, then we go into a whole new calculation.
You're putting up another garage?
Now, it'd be a house with an attached garage.
With an attached garage?
Yes.
Are you done, Commissioner Agnew?
I am. Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Is this in a floodplain?
No.
Is not.
Okay, so you you say right now you currently have one house there and you're gonna build two houses?
No, no, there's, there's a garage and a driveway, basically is what's here now.
If I may, that was someone was living in that. It was not just, it was not a garage. It was really a carriage house.
So it's a garage on the bottom and then an in-law suite up top, so we say.
No.
I I have no idea.
So there's two structures on the property?
No, no, there is not. There's a, there's a garage on the property. That's it.
You're telling me that someone wasn't living in there? What, never?
I I have no idea if anybody was living in there. When I went through it after I bought it, it certainly didn't look like it was.
Last year at this time, it had a mailbox on.
Alright, so anyway.
All all I could do is tell you when I, when I bought it, there was nobody living in there and it certainly didn't appear that anybody had lived in there if. For a long time. It's a garage.
Is is there a picture you can put up on the screen for me? Just because I don't have access to my. What it looks like or not? Is it in?
Limited conditions here. I can't put any.
Okay, so right now it's one structure with a large garage and someone was living in that garage. Am I correct possibly?
The structure, the only.
I'm not, I'm not sure you're correct about it. Somebody living in that garage, Commissioner. But there's a three-car garage on the property now.
Okay, and Mr. McCurdy, you're the owner of the property?
I am.
The developer, okay. And when did you buy the property? When did you buy the property?
Few months ago. I I think December, January, I don't even recall.
Okay, so you bought the property and then. And 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 what, why do you want to change this again?
Well, I want to put a house on the property that I can move into with my wife.
Okay, and what's the matter with the current house?
There is no current house. It's a garage.
Just a garage. So you'll be adding, so you'll be adding. A new house here. Okay. Okay, I. I'm good. I'm done. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question? I'm not sure if anybody's hearing me. My internet's been bad.
We can hear you, but you're pretty broken up.
I'm gonna try going off camera again. If this doesn't work, I'll go quiet, but I'm wondering, Mr. McCurdy. Okay, Mr. McCurdy, do you own the property next door? Is that where you live?
I do. I own Aberdeen and Pembroke. I own the house on Aberdeen and the lot on Pembroke.
So I'm just, I'm trying to understand. So you're trying, so you would like to add on the second lot. Is where you would put your garage driveway to accompany the house. On Aberdeen?
Yeah, I bought, I bought the property because it came, I bought the property because it came with a separate lot. A separate building lot, zoned building lot, and my plan is to sell the house on Aberdeen. And build a house for on Pembroke, which is a separate lot that has the garage only on it right now.
Okay, so you're not trying to build. An accompanying piece to your existing house on the other lot. It'll be one lot living and.
No, 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 no.
The house will remain on Aberdeen.
That's correct. That's correct. And I already submitted the plans for the new house on Pembroke to the historical review board, which they they approved. And there's a, there's a lot I'm building on, the lot I'm building on, just to reiterate, there's no stormwater management on it now whatsoever.
But there is a currently a structure in a driveway.
Currently structured and driven.
And you'll remove the structure and driveway.
Correct.
You'll remove the structure and driveway to build a house and a driveway and a garage and whatever according to your plans.
Correct. Well, the the garage is going to be attached to the house, a two-car garage where there's a three-car garage back there now. Correct.
Okay, thank you for helping me understand that.
Sure, no problem.
Can you just quickly describe for me? I recall when you were before us and you had a rain garden. I believe that was pretty close to the street prior. Just describe to me quickly the upgrades to the system that you are proposing.
Bob, go ahead.
It's now, it's a totally underground system, you know, and when pipes under the three, three-foot diameter pipes. And it. It's a, basically, you know, the typical, even the last project, it's. Never see it except that. When you have to clean it down. Yeah, and the one problem was that the engineer had a problem with, what is it? He didn't like the way I had the bubble up spreader discharge, so I I did some moving around and moved it further away from the road. And the driveway, so, and he was happy with that. And but, yeah, the the rain garden was. Some people like rain gardens, some people don't, and they're not, they're not real popular in Radnor. Basically, it's your basic underground system that collects the water and discharges it at a slower rate than it came in.
And in the information that you are, is in our packet, do I know that there are some trees you you're talking about? To, we're to, two large trees. Are those trees existing or are those new trees you're going to be planting?
No, there are two large trees. They're just, we're trying to stay as far away from as possible. We're not, we're taking down, I think we're taking down a couple of small trees. But that was, it's already been by the shade treatment.
Okay, but part of the reason for moving the system also is to preserve those trees, correct?
Yeah, I moved it further away from the trees and actually changed the shape of it, so.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Is there any additional, Commissioner, comment?
I'd be interested in hearing from Mr. Norsini on this project. About whether or not the you think are are going to improve.
Yes, Commissioner, so this is, there are distinct, some, there are very distinct similarities between this and the last project. So just for clarification, and the applicant stated it correctly, they are increasing the. Impervious footprint by seven hundred square feet. But the reality of it is when they scrape the site, our ordinance says everything is new and curved and you must manage that. And that's what they have to follow through the ordinance. So again, they came to before this Board of Commissioners with a rain garden. That did not meet with your approval. The waiver was denied and they're now back before you. So similarly, I did not meet with these folks to go through anything with them. Their application was reviewed by our third-party reviewer, Janet Fleming, Andrew Zerby to be exact. And they are doing the same thing. They're stating, they're they're putting forth, we're gonna. As with the other project, they cannot reduce the volume because the lot will not infiltrate. So the volume reduction requirement cannot be met. So will it, to Commissioner Larkin's question from the last one, will it increase the volume? Yes, it will. Will the rate of flow that leaves the property be reduced? Yes, it will be reduced, because as Mr. Wager had noted. Or it was perhaps Mr. McCurdy. The site previously had no stormwater management controls. Now it will have controls. And again, this, this goes back to our ordinance. This applicant is required to be before you because they cannot meet the requirements of the infiltration for our ordinance. They're required, they're required to request a waiver from this board. There is no specifics, there's no parameters on what they should do beyond that. So the board and myself, all. On what they should do beyond that. So the board and myself always say, well, you've got to come up with something better than I need a waiver. What can you do? Let's say you try to, uh, address the situation as best you can. So each applicant comes in with their base to do so. So Mr. Waiter, in this case, you are managing all the new, uh, 3,657 square feet of impervious, correct?
Uh, there is a little, there's a small area of the driveway that was, is not, couldn't be collected easily. So that's a bypass what we, we compensated.
And what is the square footage of that?
I think it's like, yeah. 360 square feet. The, or the turn.
So out of the 367, 3,657 square feet of new impervious, you're going to manage about 3,300 square feet through the rate control system. So again, there's, there's no objectivity here as to what is right and wrong, or if they have met a certain requirement. It's if the board feels that. They have done enough. And in the, this case, as in the last case, which were something was tributary to Gulf Creek. And as another one here, when we're on Pembroke, which we know the issues that occur here. Or in the surrounding part or the community, uh, it's really up to the commissioners to decide if this is enough. Has the applicant made a. A good faith attempt to do something? Yes. Beyond that, there is no bar to hit based on our ordinance. There is no specific requirement, which is maybe something we may want to address when we rewrite the ordinance.
So Steve. Let me go Kathy this time.
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
So Steve, I, the issue always remains, when is the system overwhelmed? And when does, and when that happens. And if it's never going to happen, then a waiver is fine, but we know we have flooding in Radnor. Flooding, you, you, you keep coming to me for eight years saying we have stormwater problems. I've seen the flooding. I know that there's problems. We as commissioners want to get to those problems and stop them from happening. Jack has spent a lot of time with a lot of different things in his area and there's many projects, millions of millions of dollars with the projects. So I want to, and I think everyone joins with me, we don't want to add to flooding. So when does the system get overwhelmed? When anything that somebody puts in is not going to help. Cause you keep saying that this, this helps. You, you said the last one, it helps, but obviously some point it doesn't help because we have flooding. So.
Commissioner Booker, so the, the applicant said it helps. I didn't say it helped. I was very specific in, in my answer and that. It increases volume, but reduces.
But, but here's, here's my point. My point was only this, Steve, if you have a rain garden or a basin, at some point it gets filled up. And no more water goes into it. More rain is still coming down and it's, it's just as if nothing was there. That, that happens, right?
When, when a system's inundated and I mean, we, I've seen it many times.
When a system is inundated.
When there's feet of water of flooding, right? When we're in feet of flooding and the system's full. And it's discharging at its specified rate, obviously it's not keeping up with that when there's, you know, two feet of water, when the system's full. And there's two feet of runoff on the ground.
Right. So it's, it's, it's the equivalent of the bathtub where the faucets overflow the tub, even though the tub is draining.
That is correct. And that would be over the 100 year event. And it just. I don't know if I'm going to confuse things, but you may recall that Meliora, after their studies of the, of especially of Wayne, but of the township was. That the 10 year, one hour event was the most damaging, most frequently damaging storm. To the township.
Well, explain to me how that could be when, uh, when you were designing for a hundred year event.
It is the intensity of the storm. So a 10 year, one hour event has a higher intensity level than a 100 year 24 hour event.
Okay. So do they measure, 100 year storms are measured, all these year storms are measured in 24 hour cycles?
And that's, um, I'm trying to get, uh. That's what these designers are. Do you remember the gray? I.
Yeah, yeah, I do. So that's, so, so that's, that's.
Remember the gray.
That's the answer.
So a 10 year, one hour event is more intense than a 24 hour, 100 year event. It is more intense.
I got it. I got it. So, and we've gone through this. Because we're, it's a lot of semantics. There's a lot of calculations. So you just said it, the 10 year. One hour event, those are the ones that are giving us the floods, even smaller, give us the floods. Um, that's a five year, whatever it is.
But our ordinance does not require these folks to design to that storm.
Right. So we're, so we're requiring them to, to design for a 24 hour period when, when our problems are occurring from one or two hour events.
So Mr. Wager, for Mr. Booker's, um, benefit, your design level storms are over, right? It's the 100 year, 24 hour event, the 50 year, 24 hour event.
Right. Well, yes and no. Technically, when you use the, the rational method, uh, the discharge is actually based on, on. The, uh, either a five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30 minute. You use pick the storm that's the worst and it makes, you know, the. Somewhere in that duration since the rate of, uh, of. Intensity and the time are different for each one, but somewhere there's, there's a worst case and that's the case you use to design the basin.
When we go to our IDF charts and you pull up your, and you go 24 and 120, 100 year event at 24 hours, that's, you're going to get an intensity from that. And that intensity is, it's not as intense as the 10 year, one hour event, which is what I was trying to tell Commissioner Booker, which was what Meliora had come up with, but our. We're not designing that level. The bottom line is commissioner, very similar to the last applicant. They can infiltrate. They're going to, they're proposing to manage the flow, the, uh. The flow rate of 3,300 of the 37 or 34 or the 3,700 square feet of new impervious. Very similar situation.
Right. Yeah. It's exactly the same. I, I understand. Again, the intensity level. The, the 10 year or the 20 year or the 50 year intensity for two, one, two, three, four hours. Are what's causes Radnor the problems, not a 24 hour. So the 24 hour design. Is.
Well, the, Mr. Wager told you what his design level is. It's the worst storm, but I mean. So this, this applicant is controlling more impervious if I'll, and nothing about the last applicant is good or bad. The last applicant was controlling the new impervious plus 50% of that. This applicant is controlling. 3,400 square feet of the 3,700 square feet of no impervious. It's going to a system, Mr. Wager explained it, three foot diameter, big pipes surrounded by stone and geotextile. And it's going to be released at a very specific rate. Uh, other than that, I mean. Really, we're in the same situation as we were before.
I, I guess I, I don't know if I, I guess I must not be making myself clear. So, so basically Steve, what you're saying is we should develop the, every site in the entire township and put in a basin and then we'll never flood again. I, I, I don't think that's what you.
Commissioner Booker, just so we're, Commissioner Booker, just so we're clear, I have never, ever said that, but will I?
All right. See, this, this is just, we just go round and round. Based on what I hear for eight years, we should not have a flooding problem in Radnor because it's addressed every single project. And yet flooding seems to get worse. I can't tell if flooding is getting worse or flooding's not getting worse. And I'm being told stories.
I think Rich just acknowledged that climate change was real.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Booker, we brought projects in front of you.
Climate change is causing, if climate change is causing the flooding, why are we bothering at all with, with stormwater management?
Same reasons I wear a seatbelt in my car when I drive.
Commissioner, we're bringing projects. I mean, we're bringing South Wayne, West Wayne Preserve, the North Wayne. I mean, these are massive stormwater management projects. There are issues and we are trying to address them. So. There, there is flooding in the township. I wish there wasn't, but as you, I don't know where you came up with.
But Steve, when we, when we, when we get the high intensity events, even a 10 year, one hour event. We have, we can have major flooding in the township.
But that's what we're designing our new projects to, the West Wayne Preserve, the South Wayne Parking Lot. The North Wayne Floodplain Creation Project. That's, we're designing to. The storm that causes the most damage, the most frequent township.
But obviously our stormwater systems become overwhelmed at some point. And when they are overwhelmed and the entire lot in the, and the whole neighborhood is flooded, it doesn't matter what you have underground or what storm, what. What, um, rain gardens you have. So that's the concern is that we're making those conditions worse. And I, you've, you've never said, how do we stop that?
I, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't understand the question.
Yeah, okay. I, 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 you know.
I, I, I mean, we are, we are trying to stop it commissioner. Um, so you have anomalies out of all the grading permits we get. There's applicants that are not going to be able to meet the ground infiltration requirements. I mean, we, we could. This could morph into discussions about our stormwater management ordinance and future stormwater projects, but this is really about. In this case, 235 Pembroke and does the board, you know, wish to grant a waiver. Based on the fact that this applicant said, I can't control the volume, but I can control the rate. I'm going to do that, uh, up to 3,700 square feet of impervious.
Guys, we've been going for 30, 35 minutes on this. We have 10 other items on our agenda. Final comments, final questions. Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? All in favor, say aye. I oppose. All opposed, nay.
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 I saw three to two is Moira off. I'm sorry, Moira, I didn't see. What did you do?
It was three to two. Can you hear me?
Got you now.
Okay. I'm a yay. Yes.
Three to three, motion fails for lack of a majority.
Can I make, okay, can I make a comment?
I apologize. You're going to be free to make a comment and public comment, but it, it's now nine o'clock. We got to keep going. Moving on to item three D, resolution 2021 dash 57. Awarding contract number B dash 21 dash 001 North Wayne Avenue Pedestrian Improvement Project Sidewalk Installation From Eagle Road To Woodsworth Court. To Premier Concrete Inc. In the amount of $298,829.25. Mr. Norrisini, could you let me know what's going on?
Yes, sir. So on a much lighter note, on a very happy note, we have a pedestrian improvement project, a pedestrian safety project. North Wayne Avenue, uh, right, this is the last street in Radnor Township before you get into different, that's Woodsworth Court. Uh, there's this, this project involves a sidewalk from Woodsworth Court down North Wayne. Uh, to Eagle Road and it also crosses over. So this is going to provide, uh, safe passage for the folks that live. On Woodsworth Court and up in that area. Uh, it actually also makes a connection basically from Woodsworth Court all the way to the center of Wayne. And there are other improvements involved with pedestrian. Uh, pedestrian signals for this. And there's about 150 feet of retaining wall that's included. We've obtained all the easements from the residents. We've got all our Penn dot permits. Uh, we went out to bid, the project came in, uh, slightly less than we thought. We've been through shade tree commission. So I am very happy, uh, to be before the board of commissioners tonight requesting the award of this contract. For the North Wayne Avenue from Eagle Road To Woodsworth Court Sidewalk Improvement Project To Premier In The Amount Of $298,829.25. Just for everybody's benefit, premier was also the low bidder on the Morris Road project, which is completed.
Steve, if I could just jump in real quick and add to that, that this is being paid for out of the 2019 bonds as well as a grant that was received.
Is there any commissioner comment?
Beck, I don't know that you made a motion.
Thank you for the reminder. I will so move. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there a commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Uh, turning to. Item three E, resolution number 2021 dash 58, authorizing. Engineering department to receive sealed bids for the Willow's Park Preserve Domestic Water And Fire Service Project At An Estimated Cost Of $300,000. To Be Funded By The Willow's Enterprise Fund. Is there anyone? I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob, Bill, who can give us some background on this, if anyone?
Well, let Steve give the project details. I'll just lead it in by noting that, um. Going back to the township's agreement with the Willis Park Preserve, there were certain infrastructure improvements that the township had agreed to make. Uh, through, or as part of its allocation of, um, at one point it was a $1.8 million allocation. Uh, portions of that have been spent down, so it's not 1.8 now, but, um, the money for this, uh, this water line improvement would come from that allocation. Uh, pre- previously set up by the board, um, and is consistent with our obligation with the, the agreement with the Willow's Park Preserve. So, um, Steve, can you talk specifically about the improvements?
Yes. They've telegraphed where my interest lies here by immediately asking for the money guys to give us a background instead of Steve. I apologize for that.
I, no, I appreciate it.
Always important how we pay for it, sir. We can't build it if we don't pay for it. So, uh, quick history. Uh, the, the water line, the existing water line in the Willow's has broken three times in recent memory. Uh, I don't know if folks remember that. We've had to close the road down. Uh, it is old. It is early 1900s. But the real reason for the replacement, aside from the fact that the existing line. Uh, is well past its useful life. We need to provide, uh, adequate domestic and fire water service to the Willow's Park Preserve, uh, to the building, to the renovation. So this not just, not only replaces the existing single line, this will be to provide, uh, the code required. Domestic water as well as the separate fire line, which is required for, you know, the futures, um, sprint sprinklers and fire suppression systems of the building. Uh, we have our DEP permits. We are going to do a directional drill under the creek to cause as little disturbance as possible to the creek. Uh, we've gotten our other outside environmental agency requirements. And we are hoping the board will allow us to go to bid for this and get this taken care of.
Thank you. Is there any commissioner comment?
Yeah, I have a comment. Um, Bill. So the, I guess a prior board budgeted, what was it? 1.8 or maybe I was on that for 1.8 million. Um, how much, how much of that money is left on the township end?
Yeah, the, um.
Yeah, that, that number, that question always gets asked, and I apologize, I just, it's not a number I have memorized. I, I want to say probably, you know, one, one-point-five is remaining. There was an initial allocation of a hundred thousand dollars to help the Willow's Park Preserve to get started. And there have been a handful of smaller investments made over the last year, year and a half. So I, almost all of it's still there. So I, if we're ballpark, if you, if you allow me to ballpark, I'll put it somewhere around one and a half.
That's, that's, that's fine. And that money, that one-point-eight or now one-point-five is separate from a, a large anonymous gift, is that correct? Or have, or are those two amounts commingled?
No, they're, they're totally separate.
Okay. Currently, and I don't know, I know that this, in the past, this board has appointed, there, there have been two Commissioner-appointed WPP board members. How many do we currently have?
I'm gonna have to lean on Peggy for that one.
Jack, do you know how many we have? Because I, I, I understand that the two Commissioner-appointed board members have, have stepped down. Am I correct on that?
I thought we had one now, but I could be wrong about that. This is not something that I'm honestly keeping my finger on the pulse of.
Okay, because this is where I would want to hear their feedback about something along those lines. And then when it comes to, that's from the township end. From the WPP end, how much money do they have and how much money do we know, do they have left? And what are their, their budget fundamentals? Is there any way to gather that? When are they, when do they have to release those those budgetary numbers to the board and, and, and what are they, those are?
Well, I am going to ask that if this is going to turn into a Q and A on the WPP, because this is so I just let, let me ask.
I'm sorry, you, you interrupted me. No, you interrupted me. I have a question, and I know, I'm asking, I'm asking the manager.
But no one from the WPP is, is here, or I can't see.
They should be, yes, they, they should be, they should be here. We're gonna spend three-hundred thousand dollars on, on something, I would like to know. And my question isn't how much money they have, my question is, when are, when are we gonna get those, when does the, the WPP have to release their, their their report, their annual report? Is it an annual or is it a biannual?
Uh, it was, so a couple of things. First of all, we, we did not ask the Willow's Park Preserve to participate in tonight's discussion because waterline is specific to township improvements. If, for the benefit of the, the newer members on the board, and for those that were here that don't recall, the, when the agreement was entered into with the Willow's Park Preserve, the agreement was, was specific, or the board was clear that the allocation from the commissioners, the one, the then one-point-eight million was going to be earmarked towards improvements to the site, not money allocated towards the operation of the Willow's Park Preserve. So this waterline improvement improves the site, it improves the waterline access, or the, the water access to the mansion itself. So regardless of who's operating the mansion, this investment will improve the, the water that is needed to service the building. So that's, you know, that's, that was, and it's, it's part of what our work contractually agreed, we agreed to when we entered into that agreement. So that's why we brought it forth tonight without the Willow's Park Preserve being invited. The, the discussion on their financial situation and, you know, where they're at operationally, I, I think it'd be best to invite them to a future meeting to, to give the board that update, if that's what you'd like. We've had some formal discussions over time. So I, 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 I think that's, there is something in the contract that obligates them to provide us information. Again, I don't have that memorized.
By, it's, it's a biannual report.
Once that report due? Or when was the last one received, and when, when does it do?
The lease and the ordinance were executed in June of two thousand nineteen, so it's a biannual report, it just says biannual, biannual report on fundraising and construction. That's the obligation. No, there's no drop.
Did we get one, did we get, and, and this is going somewhere, did we get one in January, you know?
I don't know.
We did, we have not received one yet in two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, so, and, and when was the last one we received in two thousand twenty?
I'll have to go back and look. There was, it did come to the board and present at some point, I.
Right.
Okay. And the, the reason why I'm asking this is, is before we spend any more money, especially in this COVID environment where our tax base is, it's hit, we have two, basically, this board and the WPP board with two separate buckets of money, and if we don't know what the other, you know, the other board is doing with their bucket, to me, it just seems that, you know, we should, we're stewards of this money, we should kind of, of, of see what everyone is doing and work in conjunction with one another, not blind, not work blindly from, actually, from one another. So I am, you know, we may have promised this, and I think that's fine, we'll improve the property, but dependent on their financials, which we haven't seen, and now we're going on more than six months, to improve the property, yes, we should do it, but maybe we could delay this. So I'm just curious, one of those, you know, what those financials are, when we, when we could see them, and, and if they are in compliance with that contract of every six months. And that is a, a big concern that I have at this point. That's, that's what I have, and, and I don't know if anyone can address that, that would be Steve or you, Bill or, or John Rice, or, or now Commissioner Nebraska, if you'd like to, to speak to that point.
Well, I'm going to speak to the point, first of all, that I believe this agenda item, since it does impact the WPP, they should have been invited, and they should have been allowed to participate. And I think that we should have anticipated that questions like the ones that Commissioner Farhi are asking would have come up. We've heard these before. Whenever we do talk about anything that has to do with the Willow's. And I believe that it is a disadvantage to the people who have, who, who have been working with the WPP and working very hard in moving the project forward. I believe that Commissioner Farhi, I don't disagree with you, that they should be reporting. And I believe that my understanding was that they are supposed to report in October, which I'm not sure if that is the biannual or whatever, but that's my understanding. I believe that the lease that we have with them does not require them to tell us what their financials are. I don't think there's any requirement. They have certain milestones that they're supposed to reach when it comes to the renovation of the building. But I don't believe there's any, you know, they have to have raised X number of dollars. I, I could be wrong, but I don't believe that that is the case. So my feeling is on this is that the building is ours. We do lease it back to them, but the building belongs to us, and it's our responsibility. So for us to make these improvements, and mind you, for those who are new, and, or if you might have forgotten, the money that is earmarked can only be spent in the parks. Am I correct, Mr. White, on that? Remembering that from the prior board, so the board that precedes me being on here, I believe of the board, the only person here is probably Commissioner Booker.
No, me too. I did vote for the budget.
Okay, so you know that the money can only be used for the parks. Am I correct, Mr. White, on that?
The, the, the parks, the, just the Willow's Park, not any township park.
So that money can only be used on the Willow's Park. It's not like we can take that money and use it someplace else. So, you know, to me, that seems like a good use of the money. Now, based on the fact that I don't know if anyone, because I can't see if anyone here from the Willow's is here, or even if they are, if they're prepared to present on this, or to answer the questions that Commissioner Farhi has posed, or other commissioners might pose. I am wondering if this is something we should perhaps table, and maybe go back to the Willow's Park Preserve and ask them, and talk to them, and see how we might present on this together. I, you know, I, I'm in favor of this. I think that we should continue to move forward. We've come very far. I think that they have progressed very far with the building. There are some other things that, it's my understanding they're ready to move on. I don't want to steal their thunder if they want to present on that, but I guess I'm kind of weighing the idea of making a motion to table.
I'll, I'll second that.
I did not make a motion. I said I'm weighing, make a motion.
Well, I will make a motion to table.
There a second on the motion to table?
I, I would say it's only going out to bid, and so we can, we can, we have another shot when the prices come in, we can see what it actually is and, and talk with, and find out the information exactly where they are in fundraising, et cetera. My question is, what is the Willow's Enterprise Fund? Is that something? I thought that we, we had committed one-point-eight million to this, to this project. A portion of that was going to be this waterline, sewer line, and other, and other, other pieces. Is the fund, is there a separate fund to that one-point-eight million, Bill?
No, it's all, it's all being accounted for out of the Willow's Enterprise Fund.
What is the Willow's Enterprise Fund?
It's the fund that the township created decades ago to account for the, the mansion activity. So when we were operating the mansion as the township, all of that accounting was out of that fund. Since that activity ceased, I don't know, eight-ish years ago, the activity in the fund ceased. So when the board entered into this agreement with the Willow's Park Preserve, the monies are, are transferred into the Enterprise Fund, the Willow's Enterprise Fund and expensed out of there.
Okay, all right, I, I, I did recall that, that terminology. I, I, I don't think Commissioner Abel is here, but I know this is, one of his issues is the same concerns that, that Sean refers to. Where are, where are we on the fundraising? Where are we on the improvements? I, I've told, I've been told that they didn't finish the roof, I think, so the roof is done. But at this point, so we should find that out, and we should talk and, and do a presentation and understand the commitments and where we are with the funding by the time we get the bids back, is what I would recommend.
I'll just, I'll just clarify, this to me is not a fundraising issue, this is more of a solvency issue. And that's kind of, kind of where, where I'm at. Fundraising is great, I just wanted to know how much money they have left.
I don't think that they have to tell us that. And I, I think it's also not helpful to question solvency.
Well, I just, John, do they have to give us the, a report or not on their financials?
There's a biannual report on fundraising activities and construction activities.
But, okay, but if we don't have that, and, and we should have had it by October, and six months would be, say, March, April at the latest, and now we're toward the end of June, that's an issue, we should have that.
Well, I think what, I think what Commissioner Booker said makes sense. You're just, tonight, you're just authorizing an act of place. You know, there's no vote to spend the money yet until you see what the bids are, so you certainly have the opportunity for the folks from WPP to come in at one of your meetings in the future and give that report, or whatever information they would like to give or present.
And there's no cost.
Look up their nine-nine.
Get a bid? And there's no cost to get a bid, correct? Great, Jack, if you want to forward that to me, I'd love to sit.
It's online.
Yeah, the nine-nines are online. As a five oh one C three, they're required to post them.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment?
Uh, yeah, just, just real quickly, I, I, I will apologize to the Willow's Park Preserve. It did not occur to me when this item showed up to be put on the agenda that the questions would surround their operation. We were looking at this administratively from, I'm looking at section ten of the agreement that the Radner, that the township has with the Willow's Park Preserve that I identifies township's responsibilities, and it's clearly stated in there that we are to repair, replace all sewer lines and laterals to the mansion and construct a portable water line and fire protection line to the mansion. We presented this on tonight's agenda based on that agreement, separate from all of the other operational obligations that the Willow's Park Preserve is required to report to the board. So I, I did not intentionally try to put Willow's Park Preserve in an awkward spot tonight, and I apologize. And as these other items come up to the Board of Commissioners, we will be sure to have the Willow's Park Preserve here.
Thank you, Bill.
My apologies also.
No, no worries, guys, we, I think we know why they weren't brought in. Is there any staff, sorry, is there any public comment? None will call the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item three G, ordinance number twenty-two-zero, twenty-two-one dash zero four, adoption, adopting the, or sorry, amending the Radnor Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter sixty-two, Pensions and Annuities, Article two, Police Plan, Section eighteen, Retirement Benefits by adding subpart L to Section eighteen, which subpart relates to the Deferred Retirement Option Plan effective as of January one, two thousand twenty, and changing the lettering of the previously existing subpart L from L to M. I will so move. Is there a second? And for those keeping track, I am aware that I skipped over F, I'll go back to that afterwards, because I don't want to read that mess a second time. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any Commissioner comment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say that if this is administrative, and it seems to be, this should probably go on consent.
I, I will say that I think the police officers have been very malign nationally in general, and that it's completely unfair, and that the police in Radnor and all the police in all the jurisdictions across the country are good people trying to do the best they can and deserve the support of the country and of the communities that they serve, and I think do have the support of the communities and the people that they serve. And I think that by and large, there has been a some, some of the police are feeling that they are vilified or not, not appreciated for what they do in protecting the people that they, that they serve. And I, I want to say I support the police, I support the blue, and all the guys, they put their life on the line. There's a chance every day, and they are true people doing true service and truly dedicated to what they do, and they deserve our support. And we should not move to defund or to discredit the police, because that's, that's not what is going to be beneficial. And a lot of people are retired, there's a lot of retirements. We've had a few retirements as well. A lot of police are saying across the country that it's, it's not worth the aggravation to stay in this profession. And I, I think that's a bad thing. We need, we need dedicated police, we need people coming in. We need to maintain support and appreciate the police for what they do, because it's, it's an incredibly difficult job, and it is a very risky job. This ordinance is for the drop, the This ordinance is for the drop, the um um it is a, what does drop stand for?
So this this is an advertised ordinance, Deferred Retirement Option Plan. This is a this is a pension benefit uh that was negotiated in January and now it's just being implemented. It's been advertised for a public hearing. So it's got to be an item.
Deferred Retirement Option Plan. And it it provides um some additional clarity and um it provides um additional methodologies that were not in the contract before for police to retire. And it does generally provide that they give notice and that um uh they set their retirement sometime in the future. Um however, at this point in time, I don't want to encourage police to retire. I think we need our police and that um um we want to make sure that they are paid fairly and um the compensation and the benefits should not be around retiring but staying on. So I I'm gonna I'm gonna vote against this as I have in in the other when it was introduced and when we also discussed it initially.
Mr. President, as I said, this is a public hearing. Um this is an advertised ordinance. It's been in the newspaper for uh the board's consideration and really it it's already in effect because it it's part of the last collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated. And it's now being implemented formally by way of this ordinance.
Understood. Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes five to one. Oh, going back to item three F, which I skipped over, apologies, resolution twenty twenty one dash fifty-three, authorizing the award of the engineering design contract for the Strathmore Road Storm Sewer Rehabilitation Carol Engineering Corporation, the amount of twenty eight thousand five hundred dollars. I will so move. Is there a second?
Definitely.
Mr. Orsini, you're up.
Uh so Commissioner, there's an inlet as you come in from Conestock on Strathmore, second inlet on the left. Uh the pipe is damaged. It is it too has uh outlasted its useful lifespan. This pipe discharges from Strathmore to Valley Run uh backed by Clem McCrone. It was installed in the early sixties as part of Bow Prey. Because this doesn't function, it causes uh because it does not function, it causes severe ponding in the in the bigger storm events to the point where uh Strathmore isn't passable. So we're asking the board to award this contract to Carol Engineering for the design. Uh there is permitting involved with the E P and the Army Corps and the bidding documents to have this pipe replaced in the amount of twenty eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Is there a commissioner comment?
A quick question. I know that there's a lot of um traffic going on in Bow Prey. Do you have an estimate on how long this project would take and when it's anticipated? And if um the current, I guess, stormwater, which is probably what by I then is that Ithen and what what's what's that that end? Ithen and uh near um uh what is it? Mall Bridge where that kind of lets out?
So actually, that that commissioner, um I spoke with uh Matt Pilati, who's our superintendent of Highway Sewer and Fleet. And that's probably going to be a public works project where we can fix that puddle. So we'll take care of that. This is different. Um and it's actually more severe up on Strathmore as you come in those gates. It will actually block the road. As far as the duration of the project, uh I anticipate a somewhat lengthy permitting process for this. So it would be several months till I know uh when this project could even start. So this is just in its infancy at the design stage. I would I don't I wouldn't want to give you those answers till I see further how this.
Do you know that disruption to the neighbor to the neighborhood? I guess that's my my.
Uh it'll be minimal.
A week, five weeks.
Oh, I mean, it'll be a couple of months, but it'll it's the disruption is mainly to the two residents whose property the pipe runs through. It's not a pipe that runs down the street or anything.
Okay.
Sir, additional commissioner comment? Sir, staff comment? Public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously. Item three H, uh motion to send the solicitor to oppose appeal number three zero nine seven and any future appeals for the same relief. Appeal number three zero nine seven, the applicant's B D N two fifty King of Prussia LP property located at two fifty King of Prussia and zone P L O Plan Laboratory Office. The applicant seeks variances from section two eighty dash six four spot C to permit Romanet one, a setback of forty three point three nine feet plus or minus opposite King of Prussia Road two and Romanet two, a setback of seventeen point one six feet plus or minus opposite Radnor Chester Road. A variance from section two eighty dash sixty four spot B to allow building structure slash area of forty two point two percent plus or minus. A variance from section two eighty dash sixty four spot B to allow landscaped area of twenty nine point four percent and any other relief deemed necessary for the project. The board voted in favor of sending the solicitor to oppose appeal number three zero eight eight, which is substantially the same as appeal number three zero nine seven is uh in parentheticals for the motion. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Um I'm gonna move to amend. I don't think that this board can unilaterally now vote to send this solicitor to oppose any future appeals for the same relief. If by that we're, well, I just don't think that we can do that. So I'm going to vote to amend that's amend and strike that provision from this. I think if the developer withdraws the appeal or loses the appeal and they then reapply, we would have to vote to send the solicitor each time. Is there a second? I'm gonna call the vote. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion fails for lack of majority. Okay, um. Do we have George Brosman or?
Wait, that wasn't it forty two? I thought it was forty.
That was forty two in favor in favor of the amendment.
Um Moira, I was counting you as a no. So I guess if you're saying that it's forty two, then I'm assuming you're a yes.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm a yes. I don't know when you can hear me or see me. Yes. Forty two.
Okay, forty two. So amended motion. Do we have George Brosman? Yes, we do. George, um do you want to tell us about this?
Yes, good evening. Um Chris Verlaken, um George Brosman, I represent B D N two fifty King of Prussia one LP. That's an entity related to Brandywine Real Estate, uh which is a significant landowner in Radnor Township and particularly in the Township's Planned Laboratory District, which is the Township's principal office district. Brandywine is uh probably the largest landowner in that district. Um I'm here this evening with Joe Trainer from uh Brandywine. Uh we have our engineer, um Alex Tweedy, and we also have a traffic engineer, Greg Richardson, from Traffic Planning and Design. I'm gonna give a brief introduction and then Joe um will say a few words and then we may call upon Alex and Greg. Brandywine, through this entity, purchased this property in November of twenty twenty and they have set about uh with a plan to make a much needed renovation and rehabilitation of this building. This building, as I'm sure you all know, was last occupied by Penn Madison at Radnor before they moved around the corner to their new facility. This building dates back to the nineteen fifties when it was built as a headquarters for TV Guide. Over the years, the zoning was changed and it made the building and the property nonconforming to several today's current requirements of the P L district, P L O district, like lot size setbacks, minimum landscape area and parking. As part of the uh Brandywine's plans for the property, um and Mr. Trainer will tell you about that, they felt it was very important to address the severe parking nonconformity that's on this property.
I'm 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 sorry to interrupt, Mr. Brosen, but I I want a point of order. This is to appeal this. So why is he speaking to this? This is a board issue to appeal. We're not asking for his uh opinion or Brandywine's opinion. This is just a board matter of whether or not we want to send an appeal. If he wants to speak, he can speak during public comment. I don't understand why why he's uh why he's rebutting this.
Before the town.
So uh no, I'm sorry.
George, since this is a point of order.
I'm asking and I'm asking, uh I'll ask John Rice. Right? We're not. We're not asking him. This is the vote. The vote is solely whether or not we want to appeal this. We're not asking for his opinion that I'm aware of.
George, I think you're, George, I think your presentation should just be directed to why the board should not oppose this application. I mean, this this isn't a presentation on the land development plan.
And thank you, yeah.
I mean, but it's it's up to it's up to the it's up to the board to hear what they want to hear on this, but it's a fairly narrow um agenda item. It's not on the merits of the application.
Yeah, and we can streamline the presentation, but I would say.
There shouldn't be a, my point is there should not be a presentation. Why? You need to start off by saying that you're a large landowner in Radnor is irrelevant. It's 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 irrelevant. It sounds like you're trying to bully us into what how we should vote. You you should be, but this is not about you. It's about how this board, if we're going, this is not a back and forth. This is going to be a quasi judicial issue and.
This is not quasi judicial.
It will. It will if it goes to zoning and and that's why, yes, and that's why we should decide to do that. And then we could talk to John Rice privately in an executive session, what our concerns about, but we should not be discussing it now. Because it's gonna go to, I think it's gonna go to zoning and we're gonna send John Rice and then you know, then the whole uh process is adulterated, so to speak. So I I kind of object to hearing Mr. Brosman. I object to just how you started off. I think that you're a large landowner. And I think that, you know, if you want to speak, Mr. Brosman, you have five minutes during public comment and then we vote. That's that's what I have to say about that.
Okay, so I I've heard you, Sean. Um we let the landowners introduce their project for the stormwater issues that were in front of us. We traditionally, when we have an issue that is directly to a specific landowner, let that person give us a presentation. George.
This is not going to zoning. This is not, this is going to go to zoning. The the stormwater sheets don't go to zoning. This goes to quasi judicial board. That's my issue.
Okay, I don't see the distinction there, but I hear what you're saying. George, I'm gonna let you speak. I'm gonna urge you to use a rifle, not a shotgun, though.
Okay, we'll try to streamline it. Um as I was saying, the um the building dates back to the nineteen fifties and it is, it was rendered nonconforming to many of the uh requirements. We we heard the concerns of the board uh previously. We withdrew the prior application and uh we made some changes to address um some of the comments that that we had. And uh Mr. Trainer um can go into those. We um you know, we don't think the board uh should and we currently request that the board not oppose this at the zoning hearing board. That is not commonly done or not usually done. So uh we would like to have our day at the zoning hearing board. We think that uh this property is substantially under parked and it is a very good thing to try to get the relief we need from the zoning hearing board to uh address that problem with the proposed parking structure. Um I will ask Joe Trainer to um briefly speak. Go ahead, Joe.
Yep. Thanks, George, and thanks, commissioners. I'll I'll make a brief. And and really what I want to do is highlight for you what's changed from the prior application to this application. Um and I will turn it over to Alex Tweedy, who will take you through the changes, most notably a reduction in the variance for landscape area by almost five thousand square feet by eliminating certain surface parking and the addition of green space. And while the application has uh has changed, our overall goals remain the same and that's simply resolve an existing deficient parking uh situation at the property in order to retenant the building and do so with as little impact to the side as possible. Uh now, George did mention we have our traffic engineer here as well. I do see traffic as a land development item and if we are, uh we do get through zoning, we are uh we did go to planning commission on this revised revised application and did get the recommendation to uh approve for the zoning hearing board. If we do make it through zoning, we will certainly be back to you for land development. But given that a lot of the comments in uh our prior application were related to traffic, we did want to make sure we had our traffic engineer available uh as often as possible to address any questions as you may have. I I can assure you, no one stands to lose more from creating an adverse parking situation at the property as we do. So we wanted to make sure that we are um resolving this parking situation and doing so in a way that actually improves the the traffic congestion in the area. Uh so with that, I'll turn it over to Alex and he can go through just the the details on the changes to the the application.
Thank you, Joe. Um just to do a quick summary, um and as stated in in the original application, there was a a previous application filed. This drawing shown on the screen, we did an overlay between the two to show the differences that were made. And the the comment, I believe, in the agenda said substantially the same. Um I believe we made some pretty significant changes to the plan as outlined in here. So I don't necessarily agree that it's substantially the same as the previous drawing you voted on or this previous application you voted on. But there are three main variances that are being requested here. The setbacks on the property lines, which remain generally unchanged from the first application we discussed, which was tucking the garage in the back corner behind the building to shield it from Radnor Chester Road and King of Prussia intersection and allowed it to use the existing building as as a natural buffer to um screen and hide the parking structure in the rear of the property on top of the existing parking lot that's there today. The second relief was for building and structure area. Since we're converting a surface parking lot to now a parking structure, it is now part of the building and structure coverage. That was originally forty two point four percent. We reduced the elevator lobby um a little bit and we're able to reduce that variance ass to forty two point two percent now, so a slight improvement um on that variance request. But as Joe noted, the largest change was the waiver related to minimum landscape area and um in response to the early comments we received from this board and also working with the planning commission, we went back and lost ten parking stalls of cer- a net change in ten parking stalls of the surface parking to create this large green space at the entrance, remove the parking here and change that minimum landscape area request. It was originally only twenty seven point eight percent. We got that up to now twenty nine point four percent for minimum landscape area. Um as Joe noted, that was about five thousand square feet more green space than the original application for zoning variance. That was was the first application that this board reviewed and voted on.
And as Alex or as Joe mentioned, I believe the first application we had uh when we took that to the planning commission, they didn't make a recommendation either way. Didn't make a recommendation either way, uh, but when we returned with this application. Uh, they did recommend, uh, to the zoning hearing board that the release be granted. That is another significant change, we believe, in the situation since we were last here.
Okay. Is there any commissioner comment?
Yeah, I'd like to go first and I'll try to be as quick as possible because I agree with, with all of us that we want to try to wrap this up tonight. I support Brandywine and, um, very good company. They are a large owner of property in Radnor. And I want to help whenever I can and the nineteen fifty-seven building we have here really does need to look. A little bit better and does, is in need of, of repair and renovation, so, because it looks tired, so I want that to happen. But in this case, I still am opposed to the plan, uh, for the parking structure. Because of deficiencies in the impervious cover and landscape area and because there's no discernible hardship here. First, the impervious cover. The applicant requests approval for a plan that far exceeds impervious coverage for the site. They're still asking. To be allowed to increase impervious cover to seventy point six percent on the site. The, the landscape requirement on the site is forty-five percent. Which would be fifty-five percent in impervious cover. And they're, they're wanting, they want it to be at seventy point six percent way over what is allowed. So there's a little bit, there's five thousand square feet of additional green space, but it's still. Way over by, um, seventy point six percent versus only fifty, fifty-five percent allowed. Of, of, uh, impervious cover. Uh, again, landscape area is forty-five percent required. Today, the landscape area is thirty-one point seven percent and they want to decrease it to twenty-nine point four percent. So. It's unacceptable to have an already overdeveloped site further overdeveloped. New development should not make existing nonconformities worse, so both on impervious and landscape. The nonconformities they're making worse, even with the minor changes that they made. Um, in addition, they're still requesting that total buildings on the site exceed the maximum of thirty percent on the area. They changed it as Joe, uh, Mr. Ta- Trainer. Um, indicated. It's, it's, they're only allowed to have thirty percent building cover. And they wanted to be, they wanted it originally to be forty-two point four percent, but now they're saying it's, oh, well, it's only forty-two point two percent. It's, it's just really insignificant changes. They're way over the building coverage that's allowed. Um, I, also I know there, there's a storm, stormwater issue here as well. These. Overdeveloped sites like this are continuing stormwater problem and this proposed request is gonna make it worse. They're gonna, they are going to add some stormwater. Um, and I know that they're going to do that, but again, those will be overwhelmed in major storms. Where we have a major storm event for an hour or two hours. Um, moreover, we do not waive the impervious coverage requirement simply because. Management will be provided. Um, otherwise we wouldn't need the provision. Obviously, it's detrimental to township to allow impervious cover, coverage and limitations to be exceeded. So, next, there's no real hardship here. The building has been operating since the nineteen nineties with the current parking. With just the surface. Penn used this since, for, for decades. Now. Penn had all doctor's offices, which requires more parking. And if, we don't know the, the makeup of the new Brandywine office, but it could, it's likely to be more general office. So if Penn could do with doctor's office with the existing parking. If there's more. General office, it should be a lighter need for parking so that, that it should be, it should be sufficient. But we don't know what that is. The point is. The Penn is, that, uh, uh, BDN is trying to. Decrease the parking non, nonconformity. However. They're doing it by violating four other zoning requirements. They're not even close on the setback requirements. They're not close on landscape area requirements. And they're not close on the, uh, building and impervious coverage. They're way over and they're gonna continue to be way over and they're, and they're not even, they're making it worse than it is today. That's. A key element. They're making it worse than they're, they're making the nonconformities worse, not better. Not even keeping things the same. They're making it worse. Um, also, it's not directly implicated here. Um, we, we're not talking about additional traffic. But King of Pressure Road has a lot of traffic and will have a lot of traffic from the one forty-five King of Pressure Development. And what I would say is, to the extent. That, um. Uh, it's general office. That we will add more, more traffic at peak times. Um, if it's more general office than Penn was, and if it's the same. Um, as Penn was, which was all mostly medical, all the rest of the times of the day adds traffic, so. I would also point out, we have big parking lots across the street. From Brandywine's own buildings, two oh one. King of Pressure has a huge lot right across the street. It's not full every day. The building at one forty-five King of Pressure has two giant new parking garages with fourteen hundred new spaces. It's across the street at one forty-five King of Pressure Road. And even Main Line Health has a parking deck over there and, um. There's, uh, there's other nearby spots. I want right now to, to vote to oppose. I want to send our council to oppose the variance request. While working with the applicant to see if we can utilize existing excess parking in the area. And encouraging the use of public transportation. There's likely excess parking. So that we don't need to build yet another structure on this site. You can use across the street, you can use the, the two structures that were approved for Penn. And I would like to look at that. I think that there probably could be something to be worked out, especially if we have fewer people going into the office. Post COVID and, and lighter use on the existing parking lots that are right nearby. So we should not allow the redevelopment of two fifty King of Pressure Road to exacerbate existing deficiencies. With expected building coverage, green space and impervious. But I do think that we want that, we, we want Brandywine, we want the building to be upgraded. Um, but I believe there's plenty of parking there to use and let's, let's try harder and not just default to building a new. Parking structure. And in so doing, if you listen to me, I, it could actually save the applicant money. And I'm all about helping people and helping the applicant if I can for them to save money, so. Um. That's, that's my, I'm asking the board to once again vote. To send counsel to oppose. This. Variance because of the reasons that I've stated. And we did it before. It was, it was still the same, basically the same parking structure. And I'm, I'd ask for that same vote again. Thank you.
So additional commissioner comment?
Just, uh, want to ask one question and I'm not sure which of the gentleman will answer it. Maybe it's Mr. Richardson. Um, so. I, I've been a patient over at that site when it was owned by Penn Medicine and I've also been a parent. Uh, high school students trying to get down King of Pressure Road through the intersection of Radnor Chester. Um. With this additional parking and, you know, to Commissioner Booker's point, it would be great if people would park other places and walk over. I. Don't think that will happen, but certainly it's worth the shot. Um. Do, how quickly will you be able to get cars off of King of Pressure Road onto the property? Cause as I recall. Whenever I had to go as a patient, they had the valet situation. People were lined up in a queue, many times backed up onto King of Pressure Road, waiting for the valet. Um, because I think there was even, because the parking wasn't adequate at the time for the space that was there. And that's why they had the valet. So I'm just wondering if you guys feel like this is going to help address that and more quickly move people. Onto the property off of the road without that backup that happens.
No, those are, those are good questions. Uh, good evening, everyone. Good to see you. Um. We have done a traffic study. Uh, your traffic consultant has asked us to do a study and that's mainly gonna be more reviewed. During the, uh, land development, but. I, I commiserate with you. I used to go there to a couple of appointments to Penn Medicine and. Um, it was very hectic looking around the parking lot. It's somewhat unsafe when you're driving around and I talk about this from. Firsthand experience that it was unsafe driving around when your head's on a swivel trying to find a, a parking spot. And, and when you're talking about the valet, I agree with you. It did back up, uh, when you're dropping your cars off and, and picking them up. Um, one of the things that, that, that's one of the main reasons why. We want to move forward with the parking garage is to eliminate the need for the valet. Which often required that, uh, the vehicles be driven off-site. So which, uh, to these other parking lots, which in my viewpoint is increasing traffic. Uh, this is going, this proposal that we have before us is going to, in our, our opinion. Reduce volumes going in and out of the driveway mainly because of the removal of the valet. Uh, also, if the parking lots were, uh, uh, full. And they got to the point where they didn't use the valet, they would drive onsite, then drive back offsite and then park it in other. Locations again, that's adding extra, uh, unnecessary turning movements at the driveway, so. Our viewpoint is that it's gonna be this, this plan that you have here. Not, not, uh, you know, Mr. Booker's, uh, uh, issues with standing with the other zoning issues, but. From a traffic standpoint, um, and I'm hoping that your, your traffic consultant will agree with our findings is that. We believe it's gonna be an improved, significantly improved situation from a traffic standpoint. We're also reducing the number of curb cuts on the loop road. Uh, there's five curb cuts there. Again, that's extra conflict points that were, that exist today. By removing two of those spots and then, uh, maintaining two of the. Uh, curb cuts that are out there now, we would be, again, reducing conflicts and improving safety and efficiency on site.
Great, thank you. And to the question of, is it, it's still gonna be a mainly medical use building? Or have you not decided or is it already outfitted that way that that's the best tenants that you'll be looking for?
Right now, um, Christopher Russ, if I could answer that, we are, uh, what we're proposing is just. Uh, matching what was the existing use. Admittedly, I do see this going as more office or lab space as, as opposed to medical office. Which does have, uh, to Commissioner, uh, Booker's point earlier, does have a significant, uh. Significantly less parking load than, than medical office. Um, but we, we don't have a tenant as we sit today. Um, we're going, we're looking as part of this redevelopment to retenant the building. Marketing to office, medical office and, and lab space, all the, all the main uses within the PLO district.
Great, thank you very much.
Hi, it's the more. Can you hear me? Sorry, I hate doing that. Um. My internet is very unstable. Thank you. Um, so I, I just want to make a quick comment that the last time that this was before us, I think that there was a. Uh, procedural issue that, um, we actually made the vote before we got the full presentation. Um, from the applicant. So I, you know, I just want to explain now that I will be changing my vote to. Um, not seek to send a solicitor, I think based on what I learned kind of backwards last time. And, uh, to see the improvements coming before us tonight, um, I just don't think that it's necessary and let the process. Um, uh, work for you and come back to us after. So. I just wanted to explain about why my vote may be different tonight.
I will echo, uh, what Commissioner Mulverney has, uh, stated as well.
What I will also mention is I drive King of Pressure Road every day past two fifty King of Pressure Road. There is a cutout to pull the trucks, the traffic off of the street. Um, I never saw an instance where there is a backup on the King of Pressure Road because of valet. Also, um, reducing the amount of curb cuts, I'm not convinced would, would have any effect, but. In any event, that's not what the issues are. The issues are. It's overbuilt, it's under landscape. And. It's got too much impervious and we're making those conditions all worse. For the sake of parking and there's parking all around the area that, that the owner can use. And I would, I would encourage the really looking at. Fourteen hundred new spots at one, fourteen hundred new. Parking structure spots at one forty-five King of Pressure Road, two oh one and, and other locations. Thank you.
Okay, it's ten o'clock. Final comments? Staff comment? Public comment? Very none? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Vote to oppose. That's right.
All in favor of sending the solicitor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to sending the solicitors, say aye. Aye. Okay. Vote fails for lack of, lack of a majority. Thank you. This is why we should not be governing at ten PM at night, or at least I should not be anyway.
Wait, didn't I say? Wasn't it four two?
Four two.
I. Okay.
Two four. It's two four.
It's.
Two yays, four nays.
The motion to send the solicitor fails for lack of a majority.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought you meant it was three, three. Okay, sorry. Okay.
Um. Item three, I motion to authorize the petition process for the West Lane Cemetery. I'm going to move for that. But because it's been requested by Commissioner Abel, who's not here to speak to it. I'm going to thereafter, uh, move to table it to the next meeting. So is there a second for this item? During the second, I will move to table the item so that Jake can speak to it when he comes.
Second.
Is there a second? All in favor of the motion to table? All in favor of the motion table, say aye. Motion's table passes unanimously. Moving on to item four, reports of standing committees. Do we have any standing committee reports?
I just have one really quick, um, acknowledgement from the library. Uh, we had four, um, board members who went off after many years of service. One was one of our township representatives who we voted earlier this evening to replace. So I just wanted to acknowledge, um, the service and dedication of Heather Riley, Jim Ernst, Heidi Murphy and Nancy Monahan. Uh, for their, um, commitment to the library, uh, gone through strategic planning. Everything that, uh, happened with the construction. They have been, um, fantastic champions. And, uh, we couldn't be better served by these residents for, um, such a wonderful. Place in our community, this library. And I also just wanted to, um, congratulate Bill Lawler, who was, uh, renamed to president. Erin Crook, who is now vice president, uh, Phil Cook, who is, uh, re-upped as treasurer and, uh, secretary, who is Jen Stout. So a good leadership team, um, at the library with the, uh, the Board of Trustees. So congratulations to all and thank you.
And I, I would just like to, um. Say, so I'm sorry, Commissioner Bress, we're done and I'm gonna take off. Cause it's late. Bill, I know that Tammy Cohen, I don't have in front of me, um, that her crew won another award. Am I correct? It was sent to me. It was a while ago. You know, I'll, uh, I'll talk to Tammy next time I'm at the parks.
Yeah, uh, they've won.
She always wins them, so.
Yes.
Okay, I will, I will find out what that is.
Great. Is there any new business?
One piece of new business, Jack. When we vote on a, on an item, we shouldn't bring it back over and over again to vote. I don't. I don't understand your, your amendment to say that we could, we could vote, if, if we would have lost. If, if we would have opposed this BDN issue. Obviously, your amendment would have allowed them to bring it again and again and again until you got the vote you wanted, so. I recommend we not do that type of thing, Jack.
So, Rich, we really don't have a choice, one way or the other. Every time they amend their application, they, it's a new application. Sorry. Do we have any old business?
Um, so, as, I, I had received a question about the. Uh, business with the, the. Um, so I, I had received a question about the, uh, business with the treasurer. Are we, is that something that will be on a subsequent agenda to vote on the deputy treasurer? Or was that something that will move forward at a later date?
That was supposed to be on today's agenda. I had at the previous meeting, the previous regular meeting, requested that the treasurer provide us with a copy of her certification. I haven't gotten that yet. Because, um, I think, uh, and this has not been vetted by anyone other than me, so it's my own opinion and nobody else's. And certainly not the position of the township or the solicitor. Uh, or at least it's not necessarily the position of either. Because I think that she cannot appoint a deputy unless she's certified. I'd like to see that and I just didn't want to have that conversation in public. So we'll come back one way or the other at the next meeting and hopefully we'll have gotten a certification by then.
What certification are you referring to?
Treasurer needs to be certified in order to take office, I believe.
Certified by whom? What certification are you referring to?
It's in the.
It's a D C E D, uh, does the training, statewide training for the Electoral Tax Collectors Association. It's in the local tax collection law. It's gotta be done on an annual basis, I believe. I mean, there's, there's some other requirements, but that, that's been the, in the act since I think for about five years, two thousand sixteen, two thousand fifteen. That's been a requirement before you can take office when you're first elected, uh, and then annually after that.
But that wouldn't apply to a deputy who's not taking office until such time as the treasurer cannot perform.
It would apply to the elected tax collector. Yeah, not a deputy. So I think what Jack just said was that he wanted to see, uh, the current treasurer's certification. And that's what he's looking. Because if they, if, if, if the existing tax collector or treasurer is not certified, they don't have the power to appoint a deputy. So it's assuming she has a certification, Rich, but, um, it needs to be provided for, I guess, this year and last year, um, from the state. It's a form that, once you do the, you take the courses and I have no idea what the courses are like or how long. But, uh, it, it goes through Department of Community and Economic Development in Harrisburg. They conduct most of the training.
Okay, any additional business? Very none, final part, public participation. Seeing none, I will move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. We are done, thank you all.